Welcome to the September 27th, 2023 special meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission with our guests from the city of Lacey. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work session. We welcome public comment for those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm this season's chair and I reside in District Two. We'll start our introductions of the planning commissioners here in the boardroom then move online. We'll start down here with Commissioner Halverson, please.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Derek Day, District One.
Yeah, I'm having Lacey.
I definitely read something, Lacey.
Mark Meininger, Lacey.
Michael, Lacey.
And I believe we have Commissioner Pesinger online.
Kevin Pesinger, District One.
And Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, hi, this is Helen Wheatley, District One.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, I hope everybody has had an opportunity to look at the agenda. I did want to make one minor addition, even though this is a special meeting. I want to add back in between staff updates and good of the order. Sorry to interrupt, but we have one of our commissioners online as well. Our chairman of our planning commission, Dave Lawson.
Dave Lawson, Chair, Lacey.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that, Commissioner Lawson.
No problem.
So this calendar edition between staff updates and good of the order and having having that update, I'd entertain a motion on our agenda. From the Thurston County Planning Commission.
What are you putting between them?
A calendar update between staff updates and good of the order.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to accept the amended agenda. We'd call for the vote from the County Planning Commission.
Halverson?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Pesenger?
Hi.
Fisher Wheatley?
Hi.
Ice Chair Dave?
Hi.
Chair Casino?
Hi, that agenda has been accepted. At this point, we're going to move on to the public communication portion of our meeting and this is would be for public communications on things that we have not had a planning or a public hearing on. Nor comments pertaining to the Lacey joint plan. Because we will be having a public hearing for that in a few minutes and taking public comment for that at that time. So if you have public comments on anything other than those, we'd take those now. And not seeing anybody in the boardroom wanting to speak. Is there anybody online that would like to address the planning commissions? Not seeing anybody online. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the public hearing, but our public hearing is not going to start till seven. So I think we're going to take a 12-minute break and come back and start our public hearing at seven.
You want to do staff updates or calendar?
Do you want to do staff updates and calendar now, change your order? Okay, then we'll take a, do you have a staff update for us?
I don't think anything beyond what we've provided last week, although as you move to the next item on your agenda, I will say we do not have anything currently scheduled for you on October 4th. And for that following Planning Commission meeting, we may or may not have an item. You, you all have been working really hard and now the board is feeling the joy of all that hard work you did over the summer. But that, yeah, so there might be an arrangement via email in the next week or so where we move forward with either canceling that mid-October meeting or finding finding another topic that isn't necessarily a docket.
Okay, so the staff update is also the calendar update of no October 4th meeting that's been canceled?
No, no materials for you. So if you, I would advise that you go ahead and cancel it.
We're going to cancel October, we're canceling the October 4th Planning Commission, regular Planning Commission meeting. And then we're going to give staff an opportunity over the next week or so to see if they have anything for us to do for the second meeting in October, which would have been October 18th?
Yes, and one of the ideas that Chair Casino and I were talking about is potentially an update on the outreach that we've done so far with the Comprehensive Plan. If that is of interest, I don't know if we can get like a thumbs up or a thumbs down on whether it would be worthwhile for you convening to get that update, but I think we could be able to pull that together.
Why don't we give you folks an opportunity to see what you could put together first, whether or not we convene that meeting or if we cancel it and make that decision at that time?
I guess my question would be, our first meeting in November, what's on the docket? So it may be that we add that to the November docket instead of having a meeting just to come in for that review.
That's a good idea.
Okay, well, let staff kind of.
Agreed with Commissioner Halverson.
All right, with that, is there anything for the good of the order? Well, now I'm going to take a 10-minute break and then we will come back for our public hearing. Thank you. Welcome back to the meeting. We're going to start off now with our public hearing for the city of Lacey and Thurston County joint plan. We're here today to hold a public hearing on Comprehensive Plan DACA Item CPA 1, Lacey Joint Plan, the Planning Commission for Thurston County and, or the Planning Commissions for Thurston County and City of Lacey are present. This is a hybrid public meeting. Those wishing to testify have appeared in person or have joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify for those in person, please sign in. For those on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. If you're dialing in, press star nine, raise your hand. I'll then call your name and, and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose the star six to unmute yourself. If you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360-972-6785. There'll be a timer on the screen. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I'll call out names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Your time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And like I said before, there'll be a timer that will show up on the screen and you'll see it countdown. This public hearing is now open and we're going to start out with a staff presentation from Planner Leah Davis.
Thank you, Chair Casino. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Tonight, we're here to have a public hearing and accept public testimony on the Lacey Joint Plan and some associated amendments. The Lacey Joint Plan is not a regulatory document. It is a 20-year vision of the Lacey urban growth area. Once it's adopted, it will become an element of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan and the Lacey Comprehensive Plan. It does provide a framework for future development code updates. This proposed draft is a full repeal and replacement of the 2003 Lacey Joint Plan. It contains updated language, formatting, updated goals and policies, specifically goals and policies for affordable housing, climate change, and a clearer vision for the future of the Martin Way corridor. This joint plan update includes three proposed, proposed site-specific land use and zoning amendments. The first one is the Bressie proposal at 9041 Pacific Highway. It is 6.77 acres that is currently zoned neighborhood commercial. The request is that it be rezoned to moderate density residential. The next one is the MC Construction Proposal at 9520 Stellicom Road. It is 14.94 acres that is currently zoned mineral extraction. The proposal is to rezone it to low-density residential. The next one is the Forster McDaniel Proposal at 2427 Carpenter Road. It is 3.14 acres of a 12.12 acre parcel. That small area is currently zoned moderate-density residential. The request is to rezone it low-density residential so that the entire parcel is one zoning designation. The city of Lacey has requested that the county consolidate two low-density zoning districts in the, in the UGA. That is the low-density zero to four dwellings per acre and the low-density three to six dwellings per acre to consolidate those into one zoning district to align with the city that would be the low-density residential zero to six dwellings per acre. The city of Lacey has requested an urban growth boundary expansion of 182 acres to create or add on to the Greg Cuyo Park. That expansion would also include seven privately-held parcels and we'll dig into the details of that after the public hearing. This update also includes 15 geodata mapping corrections. There's a packet that shows what those corrections are. When the Lacey Joint Plan is adopted, those corrections will be adopted with it. At the August 23rd Planning Commission work session, the commissioners requested of staff four things. More policies regarding stormwater management. Information on housing stock in the Lacey urban growth area. Information, information on how much of the urban growth area has sewer or could be connected to sewer. And they asked staff to provide a written recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to specifically reduce the UGA in a couple of areas. We'll take a look at that as well during or after the public hearing. Staff has issued a SEPA determination of non-significance, or will be issued, I'm sorry, on September 29th. There will be a two-week comment period followed by a one-week appeal period. If the SEPA determination is not appealed, it will be final October 20th. I believe all the commissioners received a packet for 12 written comments that were received in regards to the Lacey Joint Plan and associated amendments. We received 12 written comments. Eight of them were unrelated to the joint plan or the amendments before us tonight. Three of those comments are specific to the proposed zoning amendment at 9520 Stellicom Road. That's the reclaimed gravel mine. One person is concerned about the type of housing that would go on that low-density parcel and does not want condos. Another person is concerned about wildlife impacts to wildlife that they have seen on that parcel. And another third comment on that amendment supports the zoning amendment. We did receive one comment that was extensive. That would be the last comment received today. Saying that there wasn't enough zoning to accommodate low and very low-income housing. And would like to see some age and racial demographics added to the Lacey Joint Plan. No comments explicitly supported or did not support adoption of the Lacey Joint Plan. This public hearing was duly noticed through a legal ad in the Olympian newspaper, through a direct email to interested parties, through a press release, and timely and consistent updates to webpages at the city and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'm going to move on to the public communication portion of this hearing and we're going to start out online today with John Woodford. Has he been promoted?
There, okay, I got it. Good evening, Commissioners. I spoke about this at the August 23rd meeting. And I wanted to be sure my comments were included in the official public hearing comments. I think that this is a very modest attempt at continuing disgustingly broad suburban sprawl. A couple of things in specifics. One, I think the entire McAllister Aquifer area should be returned, removed from the UGA. There should not be any development. The Manor House project that has now started construction is a total abomination and totally misfit. You have a downtown area, but I would call it everything south of I-5, north of Pacific, from the Chehalis Trail to College Street, where very high-density housing could be accommodated. You've got the Transit Center, you've got the Community College, you've got all kinds of things going on there that would support high-density housing. And if by focusing on development of those areas, the whole northern half of the South Sound Mall is, is vacant space now, which would be ideal for high-density housing. The fairly high vacancy rate among the office buildings in the Huntermore Park area. Could, buildings could be reformed as residential buildings instead of office buildings. It's, it's something that doesn't seem to be in the thoughts of anybody, but if Lacey wants to become a city, you might try building a city center and focusing housing in that area and not spreading Lacey all over the northwest or northeast part of the county. I just cut back, stop the urban sprawl and build densely. That's it. I hope, I hope some of you at least will be listening to what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Woodford. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commissions? Kim Lee. Kim Lee, you're up.
Okay, we're up.
Great.
Great. Hi, good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Kim Lee and I work for Lakeside Industries. Several weeks ago at the last joint plan meeting, I commented before some of you with Thurston County Planning Commission. I briefly spoke about how Lakeside's property, which is currently just outside of the urban growth boundary, could be used to provide additional housing capacity to the urban growth area and eventually to the city of Lacey itself. So this capacity might be needed if efforts move forward under the joint plan to remove these sensitive and effectively unsuorable areas from the urban growth plan. So for the commissioners who weren't able to attend the last joint meeting, I submitted my previous letter earlier today. It provides more background on the housing opportunity that we think this property could provide, especially given the property's existing access to investments that public agencies have already made in utilities, in the arterial corridors and other key infrastructure. So for the commissioners who were able to attend the last meeting, I won't repeat my comments. But I wanted to address the request that was made for further information about the property's location. So our property, it's a 40-acre parcel bounded, it's at the corner, the intersection of Marvin Road and Columbia Way. And, you know, it's, it's bounded by dense subdivisions. To the north is the Silverhawk neighborhood. And to the south and the east by very dense residential at Hawks Prairie. So this property is immediately outside the current urban growth boundary in unincorporated Thurston County. That's been designated urban reserve and under the county code, properties owned as urban reserve are intended to enable efficient redevelopment at urban densities upon inclusion in an urban growth area and provision of urban utilities and services. In our case, those urban utilities and services have already been provided. The property has access to not only water, electricity and sewer, but also access to Martin Way and I-5 by way of Marvin Road, which is a designated county arterial. So we hope the commissioners will agree that if the UGA is decreased in other areas, that this property would be a great candidate to replace any housing capacity that would be lost. Thank you for your important work on this joint plan, for your time and consideration, and I welcome any and all follow-up conversations on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commission? Star six to raise your hand. Not seeing anybody else online. We're going to move to the boardroom here to our first person would be Lynn Larson. Come up, you'd have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes. My name's Lynn Larson. My brother and I live at 2610 Carpenter Road Northeast on 30 acres of land. This is directly across the street from 2427 Carpenter Road Northeast. And for some strange reason, the county has owned this three acres, little over three acres. It was moderate density. And I think they made a big mistake because everything I've been told it's one house per five acres throughout most of the county. And the the Barbour Daniels here, next, sitting next to me, they've been trying to build their house, I guess, for the last three years and due to this glitch in the zoning, they've been unable to build it. So I would recommend approval as soon as possible. I've been fighting off the big developers for the last 50 years. That, oh, we're trying to develop the land where the woodland, or the Greg Cuyo Park, the, just the 67 acres. First, we had the Barbour Daniels Company. They had five-acre parcels, but they gave up when the county restricted the further subdivision. And then we had the big Woodland Greens Golf Course by Bob Bloom of the Capital Development Company. And everybody was against that one because that was close to 400 acres. And I helped get that defeated. And then we had the Rancho Sereno development on the same parcel, Trivoe, the Vietnamese developer. And he had, this one actually got approved. 317 houses on 67 acres. Some of them were front-load, some of them rear-load, some of them were sixplexes or, no, not his, that was Bob Bloom's. Well, I guess I better hurry up, I'm almost out of time. So anyway, luckily, he went broke and so then the city of Lacey was able to purchase this land. And, but there is one thing about this road. It has a 50 mile an hour speed limit and it's a high-maintenance road. Oops, uh-oh. And there's been one fatality. This one young man just graduated from high school and he estimated, he got his car up to over 100 miles per hour before he went off the road. That was about a mile north of us and the car flipped over multiple times and they found him dead under the car. So, and just recently, they, like I said, it's a high-maintenance road because the stop sign and road sign just got knocked over again a few weeks ago at the intersection of Carpenter Road and Dram Street. So it's costing the county a lot of money maintaining these signs that continually get knocked down. So I don't know if I need to, I tried getting the speed limit lowered.
Sir Larson, you'll have to wrap it up.
Yeah, about 20 years ago, but it was unsuccessful. So I think we need to try it again. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Pettit?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit, 9725 Rich Road, Southeast Olympia. And I do a lot of consulting work for people to help them resolve issues with being able to use their property. I appreciate the fact that you're having a public hearing because the very essence of a public hearing is not to go through a rubber stamp process. And staff may have decided this is what you get. It's to listen to the people and decide what adjustments we can make to make the plan better. So here's an opportunity. I've already addressed the fact that one of the items I'm looking at is an alignment to a parcel because of geodata mapping. It was noted that 15 current geodata mapping alignments are already put into the plan and apparently somewhat considered acceptable. This is not an easy one. The data is simple and this plan isn't going to be approved overnight and it still goes before the Board of Commissioners. You're an advisory board. Great appreciation for the people that aren't being paid a penny, that are here to try to help serve their community by making sure we can actually help people. And of course, I'm very anti, I'm anti-staff if what staff thinks is you just have to rubber stamp their decisions. Yeah, this is an opportunity to fix something that was done wrong many years ago through the geodata mapping system. And a single parcel of property having split zoning, there's no provision to use the entire property, even though there was a hearings examiner that stated the property. Because of the way that line is on the map, the county has taken action against the property owner from being able to utilize their property. A form of a taking because of an error on the map. I had it suggested to me by staff today that no changes can be made. I think that's what you're here for, is to be able to help suggest that changes can be made. I hope that you can be given the information that I have. It's reasonable, it's logical, it's beneficial to all parties involved. In, in theory, it's also a way by letting the natural form of business expand and, and develop, it'll create more revenue. And we need more revenue to hire more employees. So I'm just, I look for your assistance, guidance. If we need to put a stop on one issue or address an extra issue like the suggestion I'm making, let's do it. We can take it before the commissioners. If we can't expect that the commissioners have a right to change the plan, ultimately they're the deciding factor, then why are we even here? So please consider my particular part to be made a change and in addition to the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Up next, we have Craig McDaniel.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mission members and everybody else. Thank you, Mr. Larson, for your support. My name is Craig McDaniel and this is my wife Sheila. We co-own the 12.12 acre parcel at 2427 Carpenter Road with our daughter's family. We initially bought the property to help them, so they could purchase it and afford it and be good stewards. It's just a beautiful piece of property. It has a stream running through it. So that brings challenges with it as well. Our children and poor grandchildren currently live in the existing house on the parcel. And it was our idea to, and our grandchildren, I guess, as well, to divide the property and build our house up on the hill there next to it. So as we got into that process, this, we bumped into the zoning. And the current zoning designates three of the 12 acres as moderate density, so six to 12 acres, or six to 12 acres. Which precludes us from dividing the property into two parcels and building a single home because you have to address all of the the zoning to divide the property. So you'd have to put in a, something, or at least have a plan for it. There's a perfect spot to build a home. We just have a, my wife fell in love with, in keeping with the character of the areas, areas surrounding homes and preserving the beauty of the open natural Eagle Creek. It flows into Witter Creek. So when you, if you've got one of the handouts, you can kind of see there's a section that three acres is really the only real buildable part of the property. That's an ideal location for our house. And the balance of the property, as was mentioned, is zero to four houses per acre. It was a little odd, the county kind of bumped into it and said, we have two zonings on the same property. How do we address that at first? We had to sort that out. Building, so current moderate zoning would be a neighborhood of 18 to 36 homes. Building such a neighborhood would not serve the goals of the city or county as described in our hearing. And as I looked through the goals and the plans, you know, preserving the environment, the, the aquifer, the wells you'd have to drill and it's the runoff that would be from an impervious in a neighborhood. And it's, because if you look at the parcel, everything naturally goes down to the creek. In short, there's no public water. In short, there's no public water, water supply, or public sanitary sewer, nor any plans to bring it down available at this location. So all these facilities on site for a neighborhood, building those on site would pose a significant risk to the salmon varying stream and bays. Access is also a challenge with this two lane trip to mom. So for these reasons, we believe it serves everyone's health interest in public and the private to change the zoning for the entire parcel to be just one zoning low density. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate the comments that you made, that there's some flexibility, because when you run into something like this, now what do we do? Here I am, so I'm feeling pretty good about this.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Stephen Kern.
Hi commissioners, Stephen Kern, ninety-six forty-five Regency Loop. Yeah, I live really close to the MC construction site. And if we're going to offer them a change of zoning as a, you know, sort of a modality for them to be able to build. Now, we've got problems with the way they've exercised stewardship over the land. In the last two weeks, there's a homeless encampment that has started down there. We don't know how to contact these folks. My neighbor Larry will talk about how difficult it's been for him to even notify them that this has happened. We have neighbors that habitually have walked down there with their dogs, or, you know, seen wildlife, or picked blackberries, or whatever. But now it's a much more threatening environment. That place, that quarry is surrounded by houses that are well, there's a large community in Silicon Ridge, it's directly across the street. There's Regency Ridgeview, which is our development. You're talking nice, single-family homes, and to have a homeless encampment starting up right in the middle of it is just totally unacceptable. And I personally don't know how to, he's tried to contact the sheriff, but I'll, I'll just let him make that comment. As far as low density goes, yeah, I'd rather see it be low density than multifamily, multifamily construction. However, I think that we've got to hold MC's feet to the fire and make sure that this homeless, the start of a homeless encampment is eradicated right away before it grows. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Larry Taylor.
Hello, I'm Larry Taylor. As Steve mentioned, I live next to the old quarry, is what we call it, at ninety-five twenties Telecom Road that MC Construction wants to put houses on. And that's fine, we've been expecting it for years. Now, the proposal originally said low density zero to four. Now, if you take your combined density up to six, so our area is three houses per acre. Across from us at the Nusqually Bluffs is four houses per acre. The newest development is five houses per acre at Silicon Ridge. And I know we need more affordable housing. However, if the old quarry becomes six houses per acre, it's basically going to be starter homes next to what we call the estates that rid you. We're not trying to be snooty about it, but I think four homes per acre should be limited on this property. It's just going to be too dense. I'm not sure Meadows Elementary can support all these new additions. So we've had, there'll be the fourth new addition, new elementary schools. I don't know if anyone's looked at the capacity over there. But if you put ninety homes of all these children, I suspect we're going to run into trouble with too many kids for one school. So I don't know. So thanks for your time, but I would like to echo Steve's problem. I've been trying to get ahold of Lauren Cohen, who owns the property. I've called his sales manager, he quit. I called the construction manager, he quit. No one's answering the phone down in Point Ruston, which is their super big development down there. So we're trying to take care of a problem. There's been two fires over the years in that quarry. So I'm actually looking forward to development, but I think we ought to try to feed it before homes per acre, please. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that didn't sign up that would like to address the planning commission? Doesn't look like it. Did anybody else come in online that would? That would like to? We do have, we do have one more person online, Kurt from Sound Built Homes. If you'd like to address us, you have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button. So I just wanted to address everybody, let them know that I am working with Lauren Cohen on the development, future development of this project and heard the comments. We will address the homelessness issue. Thank you for letting us know that that is happening. We'll get down there and figure out what we can do with the authorities and also do some grubbing of the site so that folks can't hide in there. As for the density issue, the, we're in support of the change and combination of the two zones, classifications to have the range of zero to six, just because they, that change occurs doesn't mean that it's going to be developed at six units per acre. There is a BPA or a PSC easement on two sides of the property, limiting the developable areas. And we plan to do a thought-out development there of residential housing that complements the existing overhead. And we support the efficiencies created by the the proposal here to combine the the two existing low-density residential classifications to provide that broader flexibility of density, but just to let the folks know that are, that have concerns. Just because there's that range, that, that, that range is there to allow a very, a variation of housing types and product within that minimum and maximum density threshold. So it don't assume that there's going to be six units per acre max density for this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else either online or in the boardroom that'd like to address the planning commission? Doesn't look like there is. Well, with having no more public comment, I'm closing this public hearing, and we will move on to a work session again with Planner Leah Davis.
Good evening commissioners. Leah Davis with Community Planning Still, and I'm joined tonight by Hans Shepherd from the city of Lacey. I do have a presentation, or we do have a presentation, so will you share my screen? Are you just supporting or are you presenting?
No, I'll just introduce myself. I'm here in full support of everybody. My name, my name is Brian Andrews. I'm the planning manager with the city of Lacey. I would have been here last time, but I was on vacation, so thanks for having me. And yeah, I was the primary author of our, our last comprehensive plan. I'm going on nineteen years now with the city, so have extensive history. So if any questions come up, those kinds of things, be happy to answer them along the way.
And Ashley Arai, who is the community, Thurston County Community Planning Manager. So on we go with the presentation, so we can talk about things that are going on with the Lacey joint plan. So the things that we hope to cover tonight are to review the public comments. We'll go into a little more detail maybe about some of the written comments, if you have questions about those. We will go into detail about the requests that the commissioners made at the last work session last month. We will review the zoning amendments that are before you tonight. We'll answer any questions we can, and if we get there, we might get some recommendations. So we heard the public comments for tonight. Again, I'm going to recap what was said during the public hearing. There were twelve submitted written public comments. Three were related to the proposed zoning amendment. One was about the housing type on the Silicon Road rezoned. It's the former gravel mine. One was about concerns about wildlife when that lot is developed. And one of those comments was in support of the zoning amendment. Other comments were related to specific concerns or developments in the UGA, but were not related to the joint plan or the amendments before us. There was a suggestion for a swimming pool in the city of Lacey and some concerns about traffic related to approved developments. And those are not things that we can address here tonight. We did get a comment late in the day suggesting there isn't enough land for low and very low income housing. And maybe add some different kind of demographics to the joint plan, among some other comments that are, they're too numerous to list right now. You can look at those in the packet that you received this afternoon. Before we dive into the other things, I want to get this out of the way. Geodata contacted planning staff with some zoning corrections. There were fifteen identified areas that needed a zoning correction. And you can see, here's an example where the zoning boundary does not line up with the property boundary. And it's those types of corrections that will be adopted when the joint plan is adopted. No decision is needed, no discussion is needed. But it may change in small ways, the acreage of the future land use map. So it needs to be, for transparency, needs to be brought up. One of the requests from Planning Commissioners last meeting was to provide some housing stock in the UGA, some information about that. So this is information that's taken from the Thurston Regional Planning Council Buildable Lands Report, twenty twenty-one. This shows the housing, the dwelling units that were in existence in twenty twenty in the city, in the UGA and the total. And then based on population projections, it shows the capacity needed for twenty forty. So you can see there's a pretty significant increase in the county, some increase in the city. And then if you move down to the lower the lower table, unfortunately, they did not provide individual or separated data for the UGA and the city. They clumped them all together for capacity. So in the Lacey urban area, which is the UGA and the city combined, it shows the total dwelling units in twenty twenty, the expected demand in, in twenty forty. The difference there is twelve thousand and fifty. The future surplus or the future supply is over fourteen thousand, and so that's a fifteen percent excess capacity. We do know that the UGA will probably accommodate most of the growth that happens in the next twenty or so years.
Okay, and then, so the next couple of slides are pulled together to address one of the other questions that was raised at our August twenty-third meeting with our joint planning commissions. And that question was, how much of the city of Lacey urban growth area is currently sewed? And this table answers that question, but then also breaks it out a little bit more. The short answer is approximately twenty-seven point six percent of the urban growth area currently has sewer provided to it. With that, we also, this table here breaks it down both by zoning designation. So on the left-hand column there, we have low density, three to six, low density, zero to four. Then we also included the McAllister geologically sensitive areas. I did split that one out separately because that actually speaks to one of the discussions that we're going to have a little bit later about that recommendation for a urban growth area potential reduction, looking at that urban reserve. So it is information that I did want to provide as part of this table, but at the same time, I also wanted to be able to look at the two different low-density designations at once. And then across the top, we have the sewer, which we talked about. And then we also took a look at how many currently unsewered parcels are within two hundred feet of an existing sewer line. We looked at that because that's consistent both with county code and city code that states that at time of septic system failure or other significant improvements that parcels that are within two hundred feet of an existing sewer line, instead of actually replacing that septic system or doing that significant upgrade, would actually just connect to the existing sewer line. So we wanted to know how many are actually fall into that category. And then the remainder is those that are over two hundred feet away from an existing sewer line. And the other number I wanted to call out really quickly on this slide is that number when we're not looking at the McAllister geologically sensitive areas. And that number jumps from that twenty-seven point six percent up to twenty-nine point three percent. So it's not a significant increase. But what's not really captured within this is that while that difference is minimal, the number, the proximity, I should say, of existing lots to sewer is greatly reduced, just kind of on an average. So it's, it's not borne out so much in this, but geographically speaking, it does bring that timeline in. So that's, that's kind of one of the high points that we wanted to take here. And then the other thing that I want to touch on, and I included this right at the top, I wasn't sure where to fit this in. But under state and county standards, we're looking at this. On-site septic systems must be located on lots of at least twelve thousand five hundred square feet, which actually translates to about three point five lots per acre when connected to public water systems. So that's any new lot that is created would need to meet that square footage requirement based on state standards, county standards, and actually health standards. So that's something that we'll circle back to in a little bit when we're talking about that potential consolidation. But it is something I wanted to point out here. And then the next slide actually is taking this table and trying to present it. We can actually jump forward one. Thank you. This is the same information we're just looking at, but instead of in a table, it's tried to present it in a chart. It's a lot of information, I know, so apologies for that. But on the left-hand side, we have low density, zero to four, low density, three to six, and the McAllister geologically sensitive area. And then on the right-hand side, I think that's true on everybody else's screens as well, is just the two different low-density designations. And the red columnar, red, I guess, piece of the pie, if you will, represents that section of parcels that are currently not sewed, but within that twenty-foot distance of an existing sewer line. And that represents about fourteen point two percent of existing parcels within the urban growth area that fall into that category. Combined with the currently sewed, that doesn't get us to fifty percent, but we are looking at about around forty-three point five percent at that point of either sewed or within that two hundred foot distance. So potentially soon to be sewed is kind of how we're breaking it out. And then the remainder, so that tan or yellow color that you see there is the number of lots that are currently either don't have any septic systems or are on a septic system. And that represents a total of fifty-six point five percent of our existing urban growth area. And then the next slide, actually, since we, since I already had this information, was kind of working with it. There were a couple of other high-level takeaways that I did want to share with the group, just because there were findings that were available to us as we were looking at this and trying to answer these questions. So looking at those low-density, three to six, and low-density, zero to four parcels that fall into the urban growth area that don't currently have sewer access. So essentially are over, over two hundred feet away from an existing sewer line. We wanted to find out how many there are. And then of those, how many actually meet that twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot requirement to be subdivisible? So essentially had twenty-five thousand square feet of space, so that they could essentially be split into two lots or more. And then carried forward, how many of those lots that actually met that initial requirement of being able to be subdivitable based on health requirements? How many had other environmental impacts? So that's things like streams, wetlands, steep slopes, things of that nature that would potentially limit their ability to be subdivided. So that's that constrained column there. And then at the end, it's kind of a bundling everything up. So it's the remainder of realistically, probably what are we looking at as far as a redevelopment or subdivitable potential within the urban growth area? And we have a total of a hundred and twelve parcels that actually kind of meet that criteria. And that represents about two point five percent of the total low-density lots that are within urban growth area. And I bring that up because it's, it's true whether or not we go through with this consolidation. As if we're looking at that twelve point five square feet, or sorry, twelve hundred and fifty, wow, not it either. Twelve thousand five hundred square feet of space, which gives us about three point five lots per acre. That's actually a level of density that is currently allowed both in the zero to four low-density and three to six low-density. So from that perspective, even looking at the development potential of these lots that are in the urban growth area, that consolidation doesn't have a significant impact on that development potential in our urban growth area. So that's the answer to that question. And then one of the other topics that was brought up at our August twenty-third Joint Planning Commission meeting was looking at stormwater policies and how we can kind of improve these to better address environmental considerations. So there's three different additions that we've made to the joint plan based on that recommendation that came from that meeting. The first two here are actually pulled from other joint plans, both either, I should say, either the Tumwater or the Olympia Joint Plan that have been reviewed by this actual planning commission body before. So while they're new to this plan, they're not necessarily new to you guys. So this first one will be located in our chapter four environment. So this first one will be located in our chapter four, natural environment section. And yeah, I can just read it. So it states coordinate with other jurisdictions that share stormwater drainage basins to provide stormwater facilities and related management programs to protect surface and groundwater quality and habitat, prevent chronic flooding from stormwater, maintain natural stream hydrology, and protect aquatic resources. So that was something we talked about our last meeting, it was requested. So that one was, I believe, actually pulled from the Tumwater Joint Plan. It seems to make sense here as well, so we're copying it and including it in ours. And then the next one also falls into this category. It's located in chapter nine, utilities and capital facilities. We replaced the city of Lacey as part of this one, but again, it was borrowed from another plan that has been reviewed by this board or commission previously. So it's to ensure development is in conformance with the city of Lacey Water System Plan and Wastewater Conference. So again, new to this plan, but not necessarily new to you guys. And then the third one here, the wording was incorrect in a previous draft. So we changed that underlined word, which is poor. I think it was towards infiltration or something, so we adjusted it to make it reflect actually what we're looking for. So the policy states preserve environmental quality by taking into account the land suitability for development and directing intense development away from critical areas and soils with poor infiltration potential for stormwater management. Yeah, so I think it was good infiltration previously, so we're just adjusting that statement. But those are those additions, and I think that that may well be the end of my section.
Yes. The final request from the planning commissioners was to, for staff to draft a recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners specifically recommending McAllister geologically sensitive area and Pleasant Glade Planning Area be removed from the urban growth area. And so in respect, having a reduction in the UGA. And this is the draft that staff has provided, and it's up for discussion. I'll read it. Because McAllister geologically sensitive area zoning designation was created to protect an important aquifer and is zoned at a maximum density of one dwelling per five acres. Thurston County Planning Commission recommends that this area be considered for removal from the Lacey urban growth area during a future joint plan update. Also, the planning commission recognizes that the Pleasant Glade Planning Area is made up of an important wetland system and is therefore difficult to sewer and develop to higher density and recommends that this area should be considered for removal from the Lacey urban growth area during a future joint plan update. The planning commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners prioritize staff time to research and review the implications and possibility of these urban growth boundary reductions. So we can discuss that after we get finished with the presentation, if you want any changes to that. Staff was directed to include and address the Habitat Conservation Plan that was recently adopted by Thurston County through years and years of work with the federal government. So we've added into the natural environment chapter, a goal to work to ensure no net loss of habitat for listed species. I believe there are four listed species in that plan. And we've provided two policies to support the, using the HCP. So there are several decision points tonight, including possibly a recommendation on whether to move the joint plan forward. But there are some others, and that is the zoning amendments that we have. So I'm going to recap those so you understand exactly what the decision points are. The first is a land use and rezone request. It is the Bressi proposal at 9041 Pacific Avenue. It is 6.77 acres currently zoned in neighborhood commercial, and the request is to rezone it to moderate density residential. The second one is the MC Construction Request at 9520 Stellicom Road. We've heard some public comment on that this evening. It is almost 15 acres that is currently zoned mineral extraction. It is a reclaimed gravel mine, and the request is to rezone that to low-density residential. The final site-specific request is the Forester McDaniel Request at 2427 Carpenter Road Northeast, 3.14 acres of a 12.12 acre parcel. So that little area outlined in red is currently zoned moderate density. And the request is to have the entire parcel zoned low-density. Then this is a request from the city of Lacey to create one low-density residential zoning district by consolidating two of the county UGA residential zoning districts. We, we currently have low-density, zero to four dwellings per acre, and low-density, three to six dwellings per acre. And the proposal is to combine them and make one low-density, zero to six. If we adopt this change, it will require code amendment to Title 21 that is repealing and replacing 2112 and repealing 2113. And you can see the impact to the number of parcels, the number of acres, and the percentage of the total UGA in the table there. And as I stated in the last work session, even though it impacts a huge area of the urban growth area, it's not a huge change in code. And then the city of Lacey has requested an expansion of the UGA boundary. So these two parcels that are green here are owned by the city of Lacey. They will be combined with some other parcels they own to expand the Greg Cuyo Park. The seven privately held parcels, there are four here on the north part. Those are currently in the rural county and zoned rural residential resource, one dwelling per five acres. If that expansion goes through, those parcels would be zoned low-density, whatever the low-density ends up being, zero to four.
Or zero to six.
Then below that, straddling the rural county and the Lacey UGA are three parcels. They have split zoning. The north part of those parcels are currently zoned RRR, one to five. The south part of those in the Lacey UGA are currently zoned low-density, zero to four. And if that expansion occurs, they will, the entire parcel will be zoned zero to four, low-density zero to four. And this is just a map of what the park would look like. So this lighter green area is, is the proposed expansion. And the dark green area is what exists already is the Greg Cuyo Park. And if I'm not mistaken, it would be about 420 acres of difficult to develop land. Is that correct?
Would the plan be to immediately annex it?
Yeah, yes.
So put it in the UGA just so you can annex it.
Correct, because you can see on the map there that about half of the park that's currently in the rural county. So our, we're right now, we're undertaking the first phase of construction, which is going to be that map, just on the southern portion of Carpenter Road, the southwestern portion across from where it says Lacey-UGA. That's going to be the first phase, which will be a combination of a parking lot, restroom, and a disc golf course and some other trails and open spaces. And so the northern portion would be, we'd have to get that permitted, we'd have to go through Thurston County. So obviously that creates some permitting challenges there. But the, the primary reason for including this in the city limits is for, for police response. So you know, depending on, what we like to tell people, it shouldn't depend on the hole that you're on, on the disc golf course as to who responds to your, your emergency, right? It should be the city of Lacey, it's the city of Lacey Park. City of Lacey rules would apply to the park. And, and you know, if somebody had an emergency, it makes sense that it would be, you know, city of Lacey police responding versus the Thurston County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I guess my, my question, that all makes perfect sense to me. But I was kind of thinking along the lines of when you were doing your calculation on, on housing stocks, and you're putting in and pulling out 420 acres for this, does it actually impact those numbers very much? But it sounds like you calculated all those numbers outside of what was happening here with Greg Cuyo Park.
Are you talking about the housing stock?
Well, I mean, if we're going to, when you're, when you're, when we're doing the discussions on whether or not we are going to combine our two different low-density zonings, and we see what those percentages are, that this proposal wouldn't change any of those numbers.
That's correct, because this is rural county, and so it's not currently counted in any of the UGA or city projections. That's right.
And you know, it's important to note too, that this process is identified in our county-wide planning policies for how this property gets added to the urban growth area. It actually is required to go to the, it's called the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee of Thurston Regional Planning Council. So they make a recommendation to the board, so, and they've already made the, the recommendation of approval. Just for transparency purposes, we wanted to kind of make it a part of the joint plan so that we can, you know, use this opportunity to amend the comp plan to bring it in. But it's already been recommended to take it to the Board of County Commissioners for, for approval and adoption.
And I think that you received that letter of recommendation from the Urban Growth Management Committee. Is that right? Stating that they supported this addition to the expansion of the UGA. That was in the previous meetings packet.
And that is a committee that the county sits on along with cities.
So I do have some draft motions if we get there tonight. The first one is of course to move the Lacey joint plan forward. Then there's a draft motion to consider the low-density zoning consolidation. There are three separate draft motions for the three separate site-specific zoning amendments. There's a draft motion for the UGA expansion. And then I want to go into the next steps. It's a lot of work to get done before the end of the year. If the Lacey plan moves forward with a recommendation tonight, the city council reviews the materials and I guess a recommendation or some, some form of process for the city of Lacey, I'm not sure what it is.
Affirmation.
An affirmation, okay. And then they provide a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Staff then has to provide a work session with the Board of County Commissioners on the work that's been done on the joint plan and the other amendments. And then we have another public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. And then staff holds another work session after the public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners to discuss all of the public comment and the ins and outs of everything related to the joint plan update and amendments. And then if everything goes through, the Board of County Commissioners adopts the joint plan as a final action with the adoption of the updated comprehensive plan near the end of the year. There's a lot of work to get done. I just want mostly the public to understand that this isn't the end of anything, that there's several more steps that have to be done this year. And we're hard pressed to even get time with the board, but we're doing our best. And that's everything from my presentation or our presentation. So we can have any discussions that, that you like. Thank you for your time.
No, great, thank you very much. We have a lot of decision points that we can get to, but I, I'm not sure where you would like us to start. Leah, on any of these, I don't know if we should start with the UGA expansion proposition?
I, I think if there are any questions or concerns about any public comments that were received tonight, or
Start with that.
I think it would be good to start and get, get that out of the way.
Okay, well, then we're going to start out with Commissioner Wheatley first.
Yeah, and this is something that, you know, I don't think we're going to be going in this direction later. And it's actually, I guess this is getting to be my issue. It's the recreational issue, chapter five. We did get a comment, I forget the name of the person who commented, but she talked about the need for public swimming pools. And you know, it was kind of suggested maybe that that's not the purview, you know, that her, her comment wasn't relevant, but I think it is because we do have chapter five on parks, culture, and recreation. And I've certainly heard before that people are very concerned about, in particular, this lack of swimming facilities in the area, public, public access for, for families. And so I'm wondering if we couldn't add some language to, to that chapter, to the bullet points. There's a, there's a point that says support family recreation with programs and activities. And that doesn't seem powerful enough to make the point that she was making that it seems like some sports are well-supported, but family activities aren't always as well-supported. And I'm wondering if we couldn't say something like, give special consideration to the need for, for family recreational resources such as swimming pools, or something like that, and add that to the, to the Parks Culture and Recreation language. You know, to really call out that issue that is a very recurring issue in this area for people with kids, basically. And then I also had a question that was raised. We also received a, it might have been outside the, the window for public comment, but Loretta Sepinon had made some comments about the affordable housing stuff. And I would like to just have a bit of clarification. If we, you know, if this joint plan is approved and goes forward, and then we go through the comp plan process for the city of Lacey, like the other cities, you know, the, the required update of the comp plan, is this wrapped into that? Like in other words, when the work is done on affordable housing for the, the comp plan revision, does that, does this wrap into that? Like, will this be updated as well to reflect the work that is done on affordable housing in the future?
Generally speaking, a joint plan follows the comp plans. And so the comp, the comprehensive plan update, which will have many changes required by new state regulations, including addressing affordable housing, will be done first through the comp plan, and, and we'll be working on that now through 2025. And then after that is adopted, then we have a clear vision of what affordable housing policy, goals, goals and policies look like, and we can incorporate those into the joint plan update. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I'd like to address your swimming pool and broader recreational policy. I don't mind having a recreational policy, but this is county jurisdiction. And I think the likelihood of developing a swimming pool, specifically mentioning that as a, as a policy, is highly unlikely to be favorable in, in a county jurisdiction. That's almost always a municipal undertaking. And so I would hesitate to put something that specific in. Does that make sense?
Sure. But you know, I, I'm wondering if, if other people are satisfied that, I mean, because I brought this up before, that a lot of the emphasis for these county joint plans is on trails and things like that. But the fact of the matter is that we are, you know, as we're talking about increasing density and, you know, fam, more and more family needs that are not going to be, they're not going to have the property themselves to do the recreation necessarily. And it's really seems important to me to think about that and have language that sort of acknowledges that there is this need for these families who are moving into these denser housing situations. They need recreational facilities.
Yeah, well, I would say that Greg Cuyo Park is a serious recreational facility. But I, I agree with that. And I think that the, at least the Thurston County Parks Open Space and Trails Plan addresses having a certain level of service for any population. So as the population grows, they're required or goals of level of service increases to accommodate that growing population. So that is met in a different plan, not specifically in the joint plan, although it's addressed in the joint plan. There is a specific plan from that department.
I do, does the county, I don't think the county operates any other swimming pools. And if I remember right, the county only operates two playgrounds, let alone any other.
We have, we have more open space and trails.
Parks and open space and trails, but we don't even have anything, any active stuff. I mean, if we only have two playgrounds.
Right. And I think for revenue perspective, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And also.
O and M on a, O and M on a. O and M on a, O and M on a swimming pool is outrageous for the county. Go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to add what Commissioner Wheatley said. I mean, I understand the reasoning for county not taking on a swimming pool. I can understand that. I mean, but, but we do have lakes. And the county has parks on lakes. And there's nothing in here about improving the county parks on lakes to provide swimming areas for residents. And the county has a problem with even providing funding for lakes to improve those facilities for swimming. So I mean, that might be something, Commissioner Wheatley, that we might be able to put in there to encourage the county to take a look at the parks that they have within the county that provide swimming areas that don't provide good quality swimming areas.
The, the city does not operate any waterfront parks within the UGA, do they?
Yeah, the city of Lacey?
The city of Lacey.
Not within the urban growth area. And I don't believe that the county has any county parks on any of the lakes either.
Yes, they do.
Not in the Lacey UGA.
Not in the Lacey UGA.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you don't have one there at Long Lake. You don't have one at Patterson Lake.
Within the city, yeah.
Yeah, except in the city limits.
Within the city.
Hicks is in the city.
The joint plan itself really does focus on the urban growth area as it transitions. So the likelihood of something like a full-on swimming pool happening in the urban growth area, I don't know that Thurston County or Lacey is getting behind that.
Yeah.
That is the kind of thing that would take place within a fully incorporated city. So the city of Lacey does have our own much more robust parks plan that does address those kinds of topics. And that is specific to urban environments where that type of a use makes sense. And then on the lake side of things, I think that we definitely are supportive of that. But then again, it is specific to what currently exists within the Lacey urban growth area. And I think that the goals and policies were intentionally selected for the elements that currently exist within the urban growth area. So there, there might be some omissions, but it's also because those instances don't really exist. So it's not, it doesn't seem necessary to include discussions of topics that don't really take place or occur within the Lacey-specific urban growth area. So that's kind of what we're, what we're seeing within the document as it's written today.
Commissioner Wheatley, did you have any more on this?
No. No, thank you.
We're still trying to drive through all of our public comments. So does anybody else have anything else on Commissioner Halverson?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions concerning, and we talked about this in our work session before, further moved recommend approval of low-density zoning consolidation, LD zero four and LD three six to LD zero six repealing and replacing. I guess my question remains, why? I mean, that's our code. We don't really need to change it. Once it's incorporated into the city of Lacey, then the zoning changes to them, and it's not that big of a difference. So why do we want to make that change in our zoning code at this point in time, when it really doesn't make that big of a difference? Who, what are we satisfying? What is the objective?
Well, the objective always is for preparing the urban growth area for annexation into the city and to make a more seamless transition. It's not that big a deal on this particular thing. If it was a totally different zoning, it would make a bigger, bigger impact on the people on that property. But that's always the goal with UGA plans.
I guess my point is that if we leave it the way it is right now, the third point or the bullet on motions considerations on the MC construction zoning would remain low density zero to four.
Right.
Okay, which is some of the comments that we had, some of the recommendations that we had. And I appreciate, you know, Kurt from Sound Building saying that, you know, that they're going to address the homeless issue and they support that and that they, zero to six is not that much different than zero to four. He's right. It's not that much different. So why change it? And that way, if they do construction in there, they have to stay at a zero to four.
And I want to remind you of Hans's presentation about the sewer and the required area for septic system. You can only get three and a half lots per acre anyway.
Right.
So that that was an eye-opener, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that actually satisfied a lot of the concerns I had about consolidating the low-density stuff, but.
So my position on that is that that first recommendation, I would still with it. I would keep it zoning the way it is, zero to four for the county. The other, the other concern I have is that was addressed. And by the way, that particular Foster McDaniel zoning and the use, that seems to meet goal fourteen that was put up here on the board. I don't, you can go back to it.
Oh. Is it, was in the presentation?
Yeah, it was in your presentation.
Oh, boy. What are you making me do?
You're talking the twenty-four, twenty-seven Carpenter Road.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, everything seems to center on that being the best fit for this low density, zero to four, which is what we're talking about. Meeting the goal of goal number fourteen, which the city of Lacey put forward as as one of their goals.
Can I play catch-up here? Which one?
Oh, there we go. Work to ensure no net loss of habitat.
Right. I mean, you're talking about an area that has a lot of habitat, natural habitat, a wetland area, a huge two hundred twenty-foot buffer on each side of a creek that runs right through the southern portion of that property. It just would seem appropriate that that we use, we keep and approve that in LD zero to four instead of LD zero to six type thing. The other question I had is.
That's a medium density.
It was a
It's moderate density.
Moderate density residential to low-density residential on the Foster McDaniel property.
And if we didn't consolidate the two low-density residentials, would that go to zero to four? It wouldn't matter for their plans either way, though.
It wouldn't matter for their plans, but zero to four is what the rest of that parcel is zoned.
Okay.
And that's what we would be recommending. That's what I understand. So the hundred and eighty-two acres, as I understand it, for the Lacey urban growth area is almost all park, except those seven around five-acre parcels that would be rezoned. And they would only be rezoned once they were incorporated into the city of Lacey to low density.
Well, the bottom three in the south are already split zoning between low density and RRR one to five. So they would be all low density. And then the four up there would go from RRR one to five to low density.
Okay.
Zero to six. Then, because that's your low density.
Yeah, we only have one range. And so for consistency, that's, that's how it would be. So we only have one option of what it could be.
Right. So yours would be zero to six once it was incorporated into the city of Lacey.
Correct.
With zero to four for the county, it really, there's not that much big of a difference. People already have that particular type of zoning. It just makes sense to me that we keep that zoning in the county instead of changing it just for this, when on the prospect that in the next twenty years, it might be incorporated into the city of Lacey. Well, when it does, then it'll be zero to six. The other one that I saw pointed out was the MC construction site, the quarry, low density versus moderate density. I mean, the information provided as far as testimony recommended that it be low density, zero to four. And if we don't enact this, the second recommendation of consolidating them to zero to six, it's my understanding that it would be zero to four.
That's correct.
Okay. So that would take care of that particular issue, and it seems to align with everything else that we've been talking.
Are you hoping to keep that at zero to four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other thing that I don't know that it's too concerning to everybody here, I just it, it seems to me like when somebody from the public comes and testifies and presents information, it seems to align with what we have and what we're trying to do here. And it aligns with the city of Lacey and the Carpenter Road that we ought to at least consider it. And and what I'm talking about is the public testimony on about John Pettit, a commercial and medium-density change in addition to the current plan. It seems like it's a split zoning.
It's a split zoning.
And part of it, the front part is commercial, the back part is zone zero to four.
Yeah.
Okay. But there seems to be some question as to being able to get permits from the county because that front area is zone commercial to be able to develop the back portion.
I don't, I can't speak to how difficult it might be to get a permit because there's no proposal before us. There's no application. There's nothing to review as far as I know.
Okay.
But what I do know is that it's not a mapping error as was presented. It is a split zone. And in order to rezone the property differently, an application has to be made, and it has to go through the regular process. I didn't say nothing could be done. I said, in this process where this rezone has not been doctored by the Board of County Commissioners, it is not on the table before us tonight. That's what I said.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it is something that we could make a recommendation about to submit to the Board of County Commissioners.
I don't think it's, it's not a recommendation. There has to be an application received by the county for a rezone.
Well, in the, in the same way, I mean, a lot of it gets back to, you can go back, go back to our noticing, like, you notice that it's the Lacey Joint Plan plus these three separate zones.
Has to go through a public process.
Done. We haven't done any of that for this, other than what was presented tonight. There's been no additional information provided to our staff or Lacey staff for consideration.
There's a pathway to do that, but it's not tonight.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. I know what you mean. I just, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, have discussions with the public and the public bring forward testimony and identify issues. And it just seems to me to be pertinent to address some of those issues when we're addressing other issues of very similar kind.
What, what is the difference between this issue that Mr. Pettit brings forward and the issues that GeoData does in Appendix D? Is it just the person that wants the change, or is it because of the size?
Those are actually mapping errors. They're not split zoning. It's where, when the the mapping was created, the database, the zoning boundaries did not align with the parcel boundaries. It was nothing but an error. So it's just a correction.
And there's usually like slivers, whereas this, if you look at the documentation, they were two differently zoned parcels probably before the nineteen seventy-five boundary line adjustment. When that line moved, they didn't, they didn't change the zoning. They left the zoning in place.
So you, you believe that the split zoning was intentional? This is?
It would have been considered, I mean, we'd have to go back and look at the records, but based on what was in here, I mean, if it went through a boundary line.
Just like the Forster McDaniel parcel was zoned intentionally with that small piece, moderate density, and the remainder low density. I don't know when that was done. I don't know why that decision was made, but there are lots and lots, hundreds of parcels in the county that are split zoning for whatever reason.
That seems weird to have split zoning on a single parcel.
It's not uncommon.
And this one was two parcels configured differently according to the boundary line adjustment. I mean,
Truly.
In looking at, I mean, it shows.
I guess my point, it frustrates me, and I know it frustrates the other county commissioners, that as you know, some of these doctording items take years to get doctored, and then they're prioritized by the county commissioners, and then they, they get reshuffled every year until they reach that level where you have enough planning staff to actually take it on. It just seems realistic to me that when an issue comes up that maybe possibly be able to be addressed, that we ought to address it. I guess that would be my point.
Well, you have the changing Board of County Commissioners. Yeah, there are lots of different factors that affect that.
Over a twelve-year period, it's changed three times.
Yeah, just really briefly. So it sounds like there are like at least a couple pathways to resolve this. One would probably be through the actual comp plan update and potentially changes to the zoning maps. And a second would be going through the process that the the other parcels have to actually have their, their zoning reconsidered.
Well, but you still have to receive an application so that you know.
Exactly.
So an application must be received and it must be doctored. I mean, that's just the way it works.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're saying with the complaint update is if there are other parcels that are split zone, it's more like taking holistic view of split zone parcels in the county and seeing whether that really makes sense. But it wouldn't be this we're honing in on just one individual parcel.
Yeah, and some people may want their parcel split zoning. It, that, that happens.
I just heard a request for it during the last SMP briefing.
We can't go through and just blanket change all of them.
Right. I want to get to Commissioner Pesky, who's been patient for a bit, so I want to hear from him.
Thank you, Chair. I share Commissioner Halverson's concerns, especially the earlier ones you mentioned. I had a couple of questions about public comments. One of them had to do with, it seemed like there were some comments about urban growth area and the city's practices on when they choose to annex things and that it's usually ROI-based and so that there's a fair amount of property and property owners that are in the UGA but that are very unlikely due to the sewerine situation that they're ever going to actually be annexed. What is the impact to those property owners as they sort of, it seems like they're in a bit of a weird limbo and especially if that's going to continue on for decades?
You mean if they are not, if we reduce the UGA and and put them back in the rural county? Is that what you're asking?
No, if they're currently in the UGA or have been in the UGA for a long time, and yet there's virtually no likelihood that they're going to be annexed anytime in the next few decades.
Well, I don't know what the impact would be. I I suppose some people would like it and some people would hate it.
Commissioner Pesky, that's why I'm, I'm saying I don't agree with the second recommendation on changing our zoning from zero to four and zero to six to zero and six, because you're right, it upsets the balance, the balance back out in the county area for the people that own the property. So I wouldn't support that rezoning because we don't know how long it's going to be before they get incorporated into the city. And it's just another change to people out there with parcels that it's under one zoning now, and then we're going to change it. And then why? Because it could be twenty years or more before they even get incorporated. I agree with you.
And I think your, that motion that you put up there, a recommendation from a planning commission to consider sort of gets right out that issue is what is the potential impact? You know, it's going to take a lot more analysis. I really appreciate what they city of Lacey pulled together even for this meeting, but it's going to take a lot more.
Yeah, I appreciated it too, because that kind of highlighted me to also this area of three point five houses per acre is the kind of the maximum you can do for water sewer out there in the, in the UGA, in septic system.
Along those, along those same lines about density and how if we're going to do those or not, and what the impacts we'd have in this UGA specifically to the MC development property that you were bringing up, Commissioner Halverson, my, my concern is that we still have a housing shortage and that MC development property, while it is right next door to a pretty high-end neighborhood, it's also right next door to a mobile home park. And so if, and then just down the way from there, there's some new apartment buildings going in and and that whole area there is, it's getting pretty dense already. So if we are going to worry about a housing supply and we do have an opportunity to to up some of this density, that might be the right spot to do it.
Yeah, but I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that we were going to have a housing shortage. In fact, I heard that we were going to have a fifteen percent.
Well, that's actually a policy or goal of the county is to, is to try to increase housing stock.
It is, but within the UGA and within the city of Lacey, they're going to have a fifteen percent surplus by twenty forty.
We got like a twenty-two.
That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to have surplus. That is a number set up because they, we realize that not everybody's going to develop.
Right.
And so you have to have that, because if you go just with the numbers that you project, then you, then we're going to get into real trouble with housing costs when, you know, the first person that has a large parcel that is, well, I'm not interested in helping right now.
What, what was the, the band of housing stock that TRPC wants in excess before we do any kind of UGA?
Expansion.
Expansions.
I don't.
I thought it was fifteen to twenty-five percent. So at fifteen percent, we're at the very low threshold of where we need to expand the UGA because we don't have enough excess housing stock.
I think there's a lot that goes into that. I mean, too. I think there's a lot that goes into that. I mean, to, to, to the points that have been made in terms of what that number captures. And how much of that is truly buildable. And then, of course, when you take into consideration. All of the new requirements and under state law, um, I think there'll be more opportunity to continue that discussion. Um, and it's going to be a regional discussion because the city of Lacey is not the only city that has constraints in their UGA. For developing at full capacity.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what the answer here is, but I do think that we need to consider housing stocks.
The market capacity is more a here, growth management hearings board decision type deal. Because they've kind of, they, they're the ones that set that number. Was like when the county got sued or taken to the hearings board in. Two thousand and four, two thousand and five. Our number was over that and it was other decisions that the hearings board made and it said, you know. Twenty five percent is kind of your limit. If you're below that, the hearings board probably isn't going to mess with your zoning. If you get above that, they're going to say.
You've got too much.
You've got too much.
You don't think that there's a lower threshold though?
I don't know that there is a lower. I just know that there was the upper.
I haven't, I've heard the upper, I have not.
So I think I'd probably land more where Eric does on this and we shouldn't be constraining the ability for people to build. At those densities, it makes sense in places that are likely to be incorporated. Um, whether or not they end up being developed at that, it sounds like they probably won't even. And then, um, the other thing I keep thinking about too is what. HB eleven ten is going to do to these capacities, because if all of a sudden now you have more. Units per parcel that are, that are required, like all of a sudden that's, what's it's going to shoot us to like fifty percent?
Are, are you saying acquired or allowed? Are you talking about the ADU?
Um, I'm talking about, um, Hospital eleven ten.
Yeah.
The middle, the middle housing.
Okay.
So my understanding is that's going to kind of just flip all this on its head.
Right. That's the other reason I don't want to mess with the joint plan until the comp plan is updated, because it's going to be so different. In the housing arena than we've ever seen before. So that's why we have to really wait. To address housing in the next joint plan update after the comp plan is done.
I want to get a question about that, but I remembered that other part. I was like, that's why.
Yeah.
I want to get back to Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I did have some other questions related to housing and. I agree with, uh, the comment by the public, by I think Loretta Sepinon about. Uh, the plan not doing very well at addressing. Um, different housing income levels and even data about racial and, and age and other demographics. Um, I was, I'm shocked to see that the, we just recently did a joint plan with Yom. And Yom is considerably further ahead in their housing plans. Uh, than Lacey, which just really surprises me. Um, and I'm wondering whether, you know. Lacey can look at some of what Yom has in their current, just recently done joint plan. Uh, that could be useful to this current joint plan. Um, and then in addition to the housing concerns, uh, I'm really. Want to highlight the public comments by John Woodford. Um, I think today's comments were excellent and interesting. But also this is not the first time. I know we've heard from John Woodford previously. And so I'm wondering, we heard a lot of follow-up from staff about written submitted public comments. But, uh, does the staff have any follow-up or feedback related to John Woodford's previous public, uh, verbal comment?
Well, um, one of the things, one of the things that he addressed was, uh, removing those hard to develop areas. So that was addressed in the recommendation that staff wrote for the planning commission to possibly forward to the board. Um, do you have any thoughts on, uh, John Woodford's comments about putting super high density housing in the. So-called downtown of Lacey between I five and is it Pacific Avenue? Is that what he said? Do you have any, any thoughts or comments on that?
So I, I actually let the planning commission, uh, talk a little bit about. Cleveland District Planning and Lacey Midtown and you just saw it on the bus tour, so.
Yeah, we had a great bus tour that they took us around. In fact, one of the things that really struck me was this office building that is vacant. That is now being converted into high density homes. And so there, there's lots of efforts in there. Um, I think you have to balance what. Who's willing to do the efforts and the construction and everything, but it was very, very impressive what they're trying to do in that core area. As far as developing the housing, making use of the land, getting that central core, so.
There is a conversion and there, yeah, there is brand new construction in that area for, um, multi-unit housing. So it's, it's happening. In that central area, but that's, you know. From looking at it and looking at, I think the proximity, you're absolutely right to the, um, transit service and all of that is really good. But it does not satisfy the need, um, overall, but it's certainly, um, happening in that area. As much as we can possibly be done and, and, um, issues dealt with, you know, it's, it's working.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to add that after the three-year Martin Way Corridor study that was done and I participated in. There is, uh, a big plan to really increase, um, housing and high density mixed-use housing. Housing along that corridor in the areas that are part of the UGA and probably part of the city as well. So. There are efforts, it doesn't happen overnight, but, but the city and the county both are making efforts.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pestinger, please do.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that, Steph. Um, one last thing on John Woodford's comments was the one about. The sort of current plan being a, uh, basically a continuation of the, uh. Urban sprawl, uh. In perpetuity. Um, certainly Lacey's famous for that, but you know, I don't think it's our end goal or desired outcome. Long term. Um, there was recently a bunch of, uh. Cause there was no public comment on this at all, but there was recently a bunch of news about. The Loi- Lacey's joint plans together with the tribe, Niskali tribe. And the giant development of potential opportunities for resorts, a casino, et cetera. Is any of that, I know it's in Lacey city limits, but is any of that bordering on the UGA or close to the UGA? And is there any, I guess, is there any impact or consideration of that that is should be in this joint plan?
I wish I had time to follow that. I, I have no idea. I, I've heard rumors, but I, I don't know enough about it.
The short answer is no. Uh, it is fully within the center of Lacey and doesn't really have any impact on this plan. Um.
So just, so. So just so everybody's aware, the, um, city council signed a cooperation agreement with the Niskali tribe at, uh, last Thursday night's council meeting. Uh, which kind of establishes an agreement, the parameters of such about how the property is going to be developed in the future and what Lacey's commitments are. Um, in terms of serving utilities and police service and those kinds of things. Um, and this all has to do with an application to put the property into tribal trust. Um, and then that, uh, basically, you know, removes it from our jurisdiction. I mean, it, it, it basically makes it, you know, sovereign property. And so we're not going to have any kind of planning authority or building permit oversight, anything like that over the property when it develops.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, my last question.
You wish.
Uh, my last question is, uh, around, again, maybe not a public comment, but a comment by a Lacey planning commissioner. I think at the last meeting, there were some concerns shared about this plan and about the. Uh, not, it being rather out of date in a number of areas and the specific examples I remember. Were related to inner city transit, uh, references to, uh, transit routes that are not, haven't been serviced for years. Um, and is there been any Steph, uh, reaction to any of those concerns?
They were pretty broad comments as far as I remember. Um. Transit, again, I'm going to go back to the Martin Way Corridor study. We worked, uh, another. Stakeholder on that steering committee was intercity transit and they do work hard to provide transit to areas where there's demand. You know, I, uh, we work, we work with them. That's what I can say. I don't, I don't really have any, um, other comment about transit.
Was, is, is that, I think that planning commissioner was Mercia, is that name right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are they in this meeting?
No, she's not here tonight.
She's, she's resigned from the planning commission.
Oh.
Uh, I will say that we took those comments and went back through the plan, uh, and looked at the plan from that perspective. Uh, I, I will say that those comments were pretty general and broad-based and they weren't, uh, specific to any goals or policies. Uh, they were just kind of broad sweeping statements. So that said, we didn't have a whole lot of direction as far as what specifically was being referenced as part of those comments. But we did go back through the plan based on those comments to see if we could identify specific instances. Uh, that would align with those comments and, uh, we actually found that. This plan is based on most current transit data that we have available, uh, and those comments felt. Inconsistent with what is currently being presented. So we didn't see anything that seemed to, uh, corroborate that, uh. Statement that was expressed.
Okay, great. That's helpful. Thank you. That's it for me.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to go back to, uh. Um, s- something, um, that you said, Mr. Chair, about, um. Why we might want to support, uh, higher density building, um. You know. I've been sort of trying to say for, for the time that I've been on the planning commission. And we've kind of touched on this in the discussion about the Martin Way Corridor planning, you know, um. I don't think that we, we're past the time when we just talk about the need for the number of. Units to accommodate growth. I think we all understand and certainly in the last, um, couple of legislative sessions. There's been a refinement that we need to really take to heart. That what we need to talk about is who needs the housing and where do they need the housing? And how does that fit into a larger complex of needs? And we can't talk about just encouraging, um. Dense building for the sake of building more units. And in fact, there are times when it can be counterproductive. It was mentioned and I saw, you know, I didn't drive out there, but I. Google zoomed and I saw that mobile home park. And I, and I think people on the, on the Thurston County Planning Commission know that I. You know, I worry about people who live in, who are low income, who are living in rural areas. Because it's affordable to them. I'm worried about what's happening to mobile home parks all over this region. And how they're becoming unaffordable. And, um, one of those pressures that they face is. Uh. Is when more dense housing comes in that's higher priced, you know, it, it raises the value of their property and it pushes them out. You know, there's this displacement problem that we have to be really thoughtful about when it comes to Thurston, rural Thurston County. It's affordable for people. Um, and when we talk about just increasing housing stock without. Thinking about it carefully, we are running the risk of actually displacing the very people. That we're talking about finding more housing for. And so I really, um. Never feel comfortable with saying that we should simply encourage. Building for, you know, density for density's sake or because that will provide more housing that we need. It's more complicated than that. Um, it's, and, and I think, um, the state recognizes that. I think, uh. The cities recognize that increasingly they're trying to find ways to, as we were just talking about, to. To acknowledge that reality and, and it's going to require new ways of thinking about planning, really. And, and so I'm never comfortable with saying, um, let's, let's allow more dense. Building because we need more housing, period. We have to be a lot more, um, thoughtful about that. And so. I actually do lean towards preferring, um. To, to keep the densities low. I guess I'm leaning towards Barry's. Uh, thoughts, um. We don't want to change things, um. Without knowing how they fit into the overall plan and rural Thurston County has its own special attributes. And that's why we really have to be careful with these joint plans because we can be causing, um. Kind of ripple effects that we're not aware of.
Commissioner Pestinger, did you have something on that too?
I strongly agree with Commissioner Wheatley on that. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else have anything on that?
Well, I'd go ahead and like to make a motion if I could, Chair. Yeah, I got one thing I would like to, I don't know if it's going to change anything, but I think I'd like to discuss. When I'm looking at the housing stock data. In the next twenty years, it looks like we're looking to add three to four thousand units in the city. And almost ten thousand in the UGA.
Yep.
Does that include expansion of the UGA, of the city or is that just the city versus UGA?
At the, as, as they are now, you mean the city limits, not expanding the city limits or annexing? That would be as the boundaries are now.
So, I mean, to me, that's a concern.
Yeah.
That's a lot of development in the UGA. That a lot of it should be going in the city. So, I don't, I mean. I don't know that there's enough here to do anything about it, but I think it's definitely something. And maybe a number for the other UGAs that we should look at when we do our comp plan amendment. And see if there's ways that we can reverse that number. Because I see the other problem with. When you start doing these low, these like zero fours or three to sixes or whatevers in the UGA. That's going to make it harder for once, if the city annexes that, that's harder to redevelop. And I look at the MC, I'll just say, I look at the MC construction site and I say, that's really close to the city. I think that makes perfect sense for them to do an annexation there and make it something. More than just single-family housing. Cause I think that's, uh, that, I think that's our biggest problem in the cities is we've got so much single-family housing. And very little multifamily.
Capitalism encourages single-family housing. Most people, most developers have a chunk of land and they want to put houses on it. Very few developers would want to do multifamily.
Our problem is zoning prevents multi-family housing. This is, this isn't anything to do with. Anything other than Thurston County.
Zoning.
City of Lacey, but City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, I mean. There's not a lot of, and you know, we, this is one of the things we discussed years ago with the one to. The one, what was brought up when we did the rezone was having areas of one to twenty on the borders of. Of the city in the UGA, so that when you get there, you get a good development. But everything stayed as it was. And so now you've got, you know, you've got a hundred acres with. Zero to four on it where you could have put something else on it. Of course, the other problem that we have in the county with. Density is height restrictions. And that's again, a city issue.
I, I should mention to, um, Commissioner Nelson that on the corner of Gutter Row and Martin Way, which is just a stone's throw from the MC. Development, um, property, they're building a bunch of multifamily right there. I think they're called, do they call it River's Edge or River's End? Or Trestlewood, it's called Trestlewood. It's being built right there, right where the Chevron is on that corner and. That whole area between Martin Way and Silicon going all the way east to the edge of the valley, that's all filling in. And it's, to me, that is, is urban densities. We are, we're at urban densities now for that, which would probably. Rotate into my next concern, which was very similar to yours again, that the annexation schedule for the, well, there isn't an annexation schedule. The annexation of county lands to the city, to me, seems it. It's a, it's a mess. It's a mess. We have no idea what's. it's a it's a mess. It's a mess. We have no idea what's going on. We're not, it it's almost like we're not planning for anything. How Martin Way is not annexed yet is just beyond me. If you, I said this before, from Capitol City Golf Course to almost Tony State Park is City of Lacey, but we don't have Martin Way taken care of yet? This it seems absolutely ridiculous to me. That Tanglewild's not annexed yet. That all this stuff between Silicon and Martin Way is not annexed yet. I don't understand any of this at all. It makes it makes no sense to me. It's hard to believe that this is even a planning session when these things have not been incorporated yet. Do you have something on that?
I am, I think so. And I think this goes back to my, I think, earlier point. I think that like number like housing stock in the UGA versus outside the UGA, that inside the UGA, that's gonna be a very, very different number after the cities are required to implement HB eleven ten. So like there's gonna be an excess capacity that goes way up and that's gonna need to drive decisions about, you know, are we actually gonna remove some of that potential development from the UGAs to, I think Scott's point, and I think I'm becoming more and more um you know, I don't love that we have to think about a blanket like zero to six um because there are some properties in here that makes a lot of sense to zone at more urban densities and then probably others in the UGA where it might make more sense to be at zero or like one to twenty. So I think I might be being swayed away from that.
Commissioner Pessinger?
I also share Commissioner Nelson's concerns and I think this speaks very strongly to the concept of density and the in the more uh city center areas of Lacey and all of your comments are very relevant. It sounds like we're all on the same page about this. We do not want to expand uh single family housing out way out on the periphery of the UGA. We want to encourage multifamily housing and single family housing uh within the density of areas where there's density and density possibilities. Central core.
Does anybody else have anything on some of the public comment that we've heard before we move on to your next thing? I'd like to move on to a particular topic that's been kind of grinding my gears a little bit about this whole plan and that we heard some of this at our last meeting and the more I looked into it, the more um disappointed I was with it and that was on the public outreach portion of this plan. And uh I haven't been a planning commissioner forever, but we have done, since I've been here, we've done the Tomar, the Olympia, the Yelm and the Grand Mountain Plans. And it seems to me that each and every one of those had pretty robust public outreach programs. The public outreach program for the City of Lacey joint plan seems to be anemic at best. And I live in the UC Lacey UGA. And I'd like to think that I'm a moderately engaged citizen. I look for this kind of stuff and in my backyard, I would think I would run into it. And I didn't run into anything. And and when I look at the what we've done in the other joint plans, specifically in the Grand Mountain Joint Plan where the county had full control of all the public outreach, we had fantastic public outreach. It was great. We had meetings. There was um not just a flyer on some random board under some hut at some community event that nobody went to. There was when we did SMP and we were making changes for stuff, we were sending uh postcards out to people. Uh, so it seems to me that the county does a really good job with public outreach, but from what I've heard of other people and what I saw for myself, the public outreach portion of this particular plan was very anemic. It feels like it was just, there's a box that that enterprise wants us to check or commerce wants us to check. And you know, we're gonna check the box, but we didn't really engage the public. And maybe, maybe you guys tried to really engage the public. And the public wasn't interested in engaging, but it doesn't, it didn't feel like that to me because I didn't see anything. I look for that kind of stuff.
And from what I heard, excuse me, Chair.
No, please go.
From what I heard tonight from testimony, we had more testimony tonight than we've had at most of our public hearings. And there were very cogent examples of things that people were concerned about. Uh, and that, so that tells me that there there's interest there. It just needs to be cultivated through public outreach.
I I did send postcards to all of the uh parcels within three hundred feet of each of those.
Yeah.
You know, proposed rezonings. So those are the people I think that we heard from tonight. Yeah.
And and I understand that the joint plan is really a policies and goals document that the real the real actionable items are gonna come when we do building and development codes, which will be next. And if the public outreach for going through building and development codes is as anemic as it has been for go Paul's policies and goals, it's gonna be very hard for me to get on board with any of it. Yeah, it's gonna be very difficult.
Thank you for that feedback.
Does anybody else have anything before we start going into our decision points? We are, we are pushing late a little bit today, but if we're if we're close on some of these decision points, I'd like to go through them. And if we can get them done, that would be great. If we can't, we will probably have time in October to revisit this issue. But uh if nobody minds, I'd like even at ten minutes to nine, I'd like to push forward. Commissioner Wheatley?
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, I just wanted to be sure. I mean, this is a joint meeting and um you know, we're all very uh we Thurston County planning commissioners are pretty assertive, I think. Um, but I'm wondering um if we uh if we've had provided enough space for um you know, I'd like to hear if there are any thoughts from um the Lacey uh commissioners before we move on. I just wanna create that space.
Thank you, Commissioner Wheatley. We really should hear from you folks too. I don't, do you guys um on on either the the plan in general or any of these uh individual amendments or on any of the things that we've rattle on about? Especially me, since I kind of got on the soapbox, I would love to hear any feedback you have on any of those.
I may have a comment on the zero to six, the the merging, the collapsing of those two. I will admit, I was not initially a proponent of that, but I think um as Commissioner Wheatley spoke to, this is a very complex issue. And I think when we're gonna work on the housing crisis, whatever you're including in that, I think you have to make multiple small steps to get there. And I think every opportunity that you do that is part of the planning process. And so I think if we lose opportunities to put six homes on a parcel versus four. And I think housing isn't about necessarily, we've gotta look at all things. It's um homeownership is an advocacy I always do, I use on the the Lacey Planning Commission. And I think when you have six homes, they may be more affordable, you're building that generational wealth, other things. So I think for true planning, you need to take every step you can to build more availability of housing. It will make it more affordable. Um, and you have to affect all of those, but I think it's a a multitude of many, many steps and to miss an opportunity I think is something to be thinking about.
But that goes back to the urban sprawl, this scenario and building twelve thousand homes in the UGA versus in the city limits. When you create a higher density parcel by your zoning, you're creating more houses in the UGA and not in the city limits. Hey, that's what we're talking about. It doesn't make sense to do that. Not at this point in time. We have in our zoning, we have zero to four and three to six. That seems to be appropriate. You know, just to lump sum, okay, we're gonna go zero to six just because that's the way City of Lacey has their zoning. Doesn't make sense to me. And certainly, according to what I've heard, doesn't make sense to most of our commissioners. Just putting houses on the ground doesn't create, it creates a problem in a lot of cases. Because if you have zero to four and we go into the city of Lacey and you have zero to six, then there's property available in those particular parcels to grow. Okay, if we go zero to six of the urban area, we're growing the urban area, we're causing that urban sprawl. We're not stopping it. We're not trying to keep people from going outside the city of Lacey. We're encouraging it. That's our point.
Did any of the other planning commissioners have anything else? There's a couple of things that I'd just kind of like to bring up. Um, if you wouldn't mind. So um you know, the first uh I'll just touch on kind of the some of the background behind, you know, some of the zoning changes. And you know, this joint plan update is kind of the the first step in a in a sequence of different things that will be coming forth through you to the to the board for consideration. One of those things is the the draft uh development regulations or the the regulations that we've adopted as a part of our twenty sixteen comp plan that that will come later through the county. So not only is it the low density, you know, zero to six, three to six, zero to four, whatever you wanna call it, but it's also upzoning some moderate density. It will also um look at zoning high den uh upzoning high density as well. And what this gets to is it gets to um some agreements that we have with Thurston County as far as joint planning. And the 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 basis behind the joint planning is that the city takes the lead in in adopting the the zoning and the regulations in the city and then works cooperatively with Thurston County to apply those within our urban growth area. The idea is is that when we annex, then those will be consistent. Um, and so there's actually agreements and I was pulling them up from uh nineteen ninety five um that says that the county will adopt the zoning for the city and the urban growth area. So you know, just keep that in mind that, you know, you can you can make a recommendation, but there are there are, you know, certain frameworks that that the city and the county plans under that there and those are agreements will be referenced if, you know, certain recommendations are made. Um, another thing is just kind of the basic, you know, basis behind the Growth Management Act, which basically says the urban growth area is both the city and the unincorporated urban growth area. So keep that in mind. They're kind of, when we say UGA, it's kind of all kind of one in the same, if you will. Um, yeah, let's see, last thing. Oh, I was gonna mention the the public outreach. So public outreach is a little um, it's a little confusing because here, you know, the the county's moving forward with with our twenty sixteen plan, which we did three years of public outreach for in twenty thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. And so a lot of these concepts were things we were talking about ten years ago um that are now just coming to you. And so, you know, I was going back and looking at the outreach that that we did um back in twenty thirteen, we had a significant number of events where we went to not only you know, locations in the city limits, but we went to, we took the planning commission on the road um to, in fact, it was two locations in the urban growth area. It was Olympic View Elementary, which is in Thompson Place along Martin Way. And then also um Evergreen Forest Elementary, which I think is on Marvin Road. Um, we did a significant number of community events across Lacey to, you know, to to engage the the community. We went to um rotaries, Lions Clubs, Kiwanis Teams of Commerce, Olympia Master Builders. Um, you name it. If if somebody was willing to talk to us, we talked to them about what our comp plan update in included. And so for you know, fast forward, here we are in twenty twenty three. Um, you're right, the the outreach at this point isn't robust because it's a comp plan that we adopted seven years ago. So it's hard for us because we're we're gonna adopt a new comp plan in twenty five. Why would we do outreach now on a seven year old comp plan? So just keep that in mind too, that, you know, it's there's a lag and there's a, there has been a very, very long lag between the time that the city has adopted something and then the county has adopted it. That's I think not what was imagined. I think originally it was like, okay, the city adopts it and then in a year or two, we're talking to the county about adopting the same comprehensive plan for urban growth area, but that's not the way it's happened because of resource issues or whatever. It's been a seven year delay. And so it's it's difficult for all of us to now look at our community and say, well, you remember that stuff we did seven years ago? How about we talk to you about that and reengage you on that? So just keep that in mind too, that we're really pushing forward now to a twenty twenty five comp plan update focused on that, not something that we did the engagement for almost ten years ago at this point. So just a couple of points.
No, I think, no, that's true. And I was part of that initial push in two thirteen to go out into the community and talk to people and hold sessions at the elementary schools at wherever we could find places. So yeah, it's true. It was a long time ago that we did that and going back and doing it to make it look more robust at this point is a little um
dis- disingenuous to to the the community, like, hey.
Yeah.
You know.
You guys didn't do this right.
Yeah, yeah. Let's do it again.
Yeah.
I don't know. I if if it's been ten years since you guys did outreach, but the the justification for not doing more is because we just didn't have the resourcing issue to get to the plan until ten years later. And that's why we didn't go back and look at outreach. Doesn't feel like, but I I don't think. It's not a city, it's not a city issue. The the reason it's taken this long to get to to you guys is not a city issue. Okay, so so you're saying that the reason why the Lacey joint plan has taken so long to get to is because there's an issue at the county level?
Yes.
Don't getting a prioritization for joint plans.
The same thing that we run into a lot of.
It's both jurisdictions. I've been on this project for three years.
Commissioner Wheatley, please.
Well, that's that's one of the reasons I asked the question about the comp plan because yeah, we we're gonna, we're sort of put, at this point, it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. But I talked about the joint plan when we're just about to launch into you know, the comp plan review, which is gonna change everything. So, yeah, I understand that. Um, but I just wanted to um take, I want, I want to maybe disagree a little bit if I can turn my phone alarm off. Um, I wanna disagree a little bit with the idea. I mean, I agree that the way it has been done with joint plans is that the agreement that uh because we saw this with the Olympia joint plan, you know, basically Olympia came to us and said, well, you know, we do the planning. Um, if it doesn't, if it doesn't uh rub up the wrong way against county policy, you know, the understanding is that um what Olympia wants to do is how the joint plan's gonna roll. And that's kind of what I'm hearing now is, you know, really the way that the city and the county work together is that the UGA is considered by the county to be part of Lacey when it comes to planning. However, I just wanna point out that there are other models in other parts of the state where UGAs are treated in the way that we've been talking about as a as a transitional zone between the county and the city. It isn't necess- necessary that it be just, oh, the UGA is the future city. There are other models out there, um especially maybe uh in the north part of um the Puget Sound region. I've seen a couple where UGAs are treated as as that zone of transition and they're sort of treated as their own kind of thing. Um, where where the concept of transition is taken seriously and there are various ways of doing that. And so I don't wanna just, I don't necessarily, you know, talking about this in terms of um comp plan review, Growth Management Act, start starting to try to think about planning in different ways to accommodate the realities of the twenty twenties and the future as opposed to how it was ten years ago. Um, it's not a ridiculous concept to think about the UGA as a transitional zone. And as the place where sprawl, the the place where you stop the sprawl. And where you um find ways to do that through treating the UGA as as a i- in its own ways. So I just wanna say that, you know, because we're supposed to be forward looking, we're supposed to be sort of paying attention to what other jurisdictions do as well. And it is the the way that it's been done in Thurston County in the past isn't necessarily the best way. And it's not the only way. So I just wanna make that clear.
Right. Are we ready to start going through these decision points then and see if we can come to agreement on these?
I'd just like to say that I support all of the recommendations and all the motions except the second one.
Would you like me to have those back up on?
Can you bring those up for us?
Yes, there are several. Let's see.
Are you want us to do all these?
Yeah, they have to be.
I'm going to recommend adoption of Lacey joint pan as an element of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan.
They moved in seconded to adopt the Lacey joint plan as element of Thurston County Comprehensive Plan and the Lacey Comprehensive Plan. Um, these are votes specifically for the Thurston County Planning Commission though, right?
Yeah, I don't think Lacey Planning Commission votes.
I just fit in this. Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. Oh. We have some discussion, I'm sorry. Call for some discussion. Commissioner Pesinger?
So I just want to clarify to be sure I understand. We're starting out voting on the main thing and then we're going to vote on all the sub elements?
Yes.
So I'm not ready to vote on this just merely by the fact that. Uh, we haven't figured it and talked through all the sub elements, but also. As we've been talking through this, this seems like this plan is not ready for formal approval. It seems like it needs more work. We've given feedback. None of the feedback that's been. Discussed today has been implemented into, uh. Im- implemented into this. Uh, it seems like we need more work to approve this plan.
Anybody else have any other discussion? Hey, having been moved and seconded and being discussed, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Nay.
Commissioner Wheatley? Commissioner Wheatley?
I'm sorry, I forgot my mute. Yeah, I, I voting nay, yeah.
You have him voting nay.
Yes, I'm voting no.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion fails. With that, I see no further need to take the votes on the other topics at this particular point. Um, I think we're going to have to schedule. Say that again?
We could.
Are you? Well?
Because, I mean.
If you'd like to make a motion, I'll certainly entertain it.
Well, um. Yeah, might as well. I'll further move to rec, or I move to recommend approval of low-density zoning consolidation. LD zero to four and LD three to six into LD zero to six. Repealing and replacing Thurston County Code, Chapter twenty-one, twelve, and repealing twenty-one, thirteen.
Been moved? Is there a second? Hearing no second, that motion fails.
Move to recommend approval of Bressey zoning and land use amendment at nine zero four one Pacific Avenue. From neighborhood commercial to moderate density residential.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a further discussion on the? Motion? The motion is to.
Which one is the Bressey? What's the size of that?
Or one specific have.
The one that's split zoning from neighborhood commercial.
Oh.
Yes, it's up there now.
Okay.
Neighborhood commercial to moderate density residential.
Thanks. So was that? What's the status of that? Was it moved and seconded or?
Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion passes. Will you hear any further motions?
You're on a roll, Scott, so. No, I'm skipping, okay, I'm going to skip to the next one.
Okay, I'll further recommend approval of MC Construction Zoning and Land Use Amendment at. Nine five two zero Stellicom Road from mineral extraction to low-density residential LD zero to four. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval. Of MC Construction Zoning and Land Use Amendment. At nine five two zero Stellicom Road from mineral extraction to low-density residential LDs zero to fours. Are any further discussion?
I have a discussion.
Please.
We have heard over and over about every time we consider making a zoning change that. Somehow diminishes the value of a property, that that's some kind of government taking and. We ought to compensate the property owner. Um, this is a commercial enterprise that owns this land and. Seems like a change in this kind of zoning would be at a significant increase in the value of it. Is that considered a government giving and are they going to share it with us?
I don't think that kind of exactions.
Is there, is. Commissioner Pesinger, do you need an answer on that?
Nope.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm just going to point out, like I said earlier, I think this is a. Good opportunity for us to have an open piece of property that gets. Annexed into the city. And becomes something more than just single-family housing.
Commissioner Wheatley, did you have something on this one?
Well, I'm just recollecting. I mean, there was, I mean, it's a joke, but it's not. Um, there was. Some of the comment, I believe it was about this property, was concern about the impact on the school district. Um, and I'm wondering if we know enough about. About that. Um, I, I wish that there were some more discussion that involved. Uh, maybe members of the Lacy Planning Commission because. You know, I haven't, they're more familiar with this property and the concerns about that area. And the capacity of the community to absorb this growth, uh, in that particular area.
Well. Commissioner Wheatley, we're, we're, we got a motion on the floor.
Yes, I know. And then in a way, that's the comment I'm making is, um, I'm likely to vote no because I. Am not entirely comfortable with, uh, feeling assured that, um, concerns have been addressed.
I also have discussion on this.
Uh, every time property is developed, impact fees are collected for schools. The schools have always managed to stay ahead of the population. So if there are new developments, they're collecting money and always looking to. Build new schools to accommodate all that growth. It's, it's not part of the joint plan. It's. It, we work in conjunction with the schools, but it's not really even up for discussion here tonight. It's. It's an unrelated problem, if it is ever a problem.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Yeah, I just would like clarification. This first time, the, the last time we met on this topic, uh, this was a public comment, both written and verbal. About this property and it seemed that the staff at that time told us that this was not something they had a recommendation on. Now, at this meeting, there is a recommendation that we should, uh, adopt this. Um, it, it was mentioned earlier that other things that have been brought up such as the PEDIT, uh, request. Has not been a formal application process. Has this particular property submitted a formal application process?
Yes, these, all of these three amendments that are on the docket were docketed several years ago and they've been waiting for the. Lacy joint plan to move along so that they could be swept up in the decision-making tonight.
So am I wrong that at the last meeting, this was not recommended to us by the staff?
Commissioner Pesinger, I believe that these motions are just, they're not actually staff recommendations. They're just trying to help us articulate what the motion should look like.
Right.
As we make them. They're a construction issue, not a recommendation.
This was brought forward at the last meeting. We did discuss it. We talked, we looked at the map. We talked about all three of these proposals.
And, yeah, I think it's really just a swapping out. If you. Supposed to help with your motions, you can easily swap out approval for.
Well, I, I just want to clarify because I specifically remember us looking at maps. I specifically remember us not having a map for this particular property. Am I missing something?
I, I, you might be because I was familiar with it last time we talked about it, Dan, this time and.
We thought.
Familiar with it being a part of the map?
I was familiar with the, with the MC Construction Development Project as presented in our packet.
It's been presented at every point.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor. I'm going to restate it just so it's fresh on everybody's mind and it's to recommend approval of MC Construction Zoning and Land Use Amendment. At nine five two zero Stellicom Road from mineral extraction to low-density residential LD zero to four. I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Nay.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Nay.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Nay.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion fails. Are there any other motions to be made?
Uh, further move to recommend approval of the Forster McDaniel Zoning and Land Use Amendment at twenty-four, twenty-seven Carpenter Road. From moderate density residential to low-density residential zero to four. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the Forst McDaniel Zoning and Land Use Amendment at twenty-four, twenty-seven Carpenter Road. From moderate density residential, low-density residential LD zero to four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion passes. Are there any further motions?
Move to recommend expansion of the Lacy Urban Growth Area by one hundred and eighty-two acres to create the Greg. Coolio?
Coolio.
Park. Expansion also includes seven privately-held parcels that will be low-zoned, low-density residential zero to four.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to re- recommend expansion of Lacy Urban Growth Area by one hundred and eighty-two acres to create the Greg Coolio Park. Expansion also includes seven privately-held parcels that will be zoned low-density residential. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion passes.
I have one more.
Please do.
Uh, further move to not recommend approval of low-density zoning consolidation, LD zero four and LD three six into LD zero six. Repealing and replacing Thurston County Code, Chapter twenty-one, twelve, and repealing twenty-one point one three.
Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded not, not to consolidate LD one to three and LD four to six, correct?
Yeah, further move to recommend disapproval of low-density zoning consolidation.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion. Passes, fuses, cannot consolidate.
Phase a motion and then vote it down.
Really trying to make this hard.
Do you have any further motions?
Well, how, there was the recommendation that you had drafted. Oh, right, right, to, um.
Oh, the recommendation.
To reduce the UGA recommendation to the Board of.
Oh, the separate recommendation.
Yeah, let's.
Enough to do?
Yeah, I can read it out.
It's a long one. Well, yeah, okay. Do you have it there?
I do. So I'll go ahead and say it while you call it up. Uh, move to recommend to the BOCC to prioritize a reduction of the Lacy UGA. As worded, because McAllister Geological Sensitive Area, MGSA, zoning designation was created to protect. An important aquifer and is zoned at a maximum density of one dwelling per five acres. Thurston County Planning Commission recommends that this area be removed from the Lacy Urban Growth Area during a future joint plan update. Also, the Planning Commission recognizes that the Pleasant Glade Planting Area is made up of an important wetland system. And is therefore difficult to sewer and develop to higher density and should be removed from the Lacy Urban Growth Area during a future joint plan update. The Planning Commission requests that the Board of County Commissioners prioritize staff time to research and review the implementa- implications and possibility. Of these urban growth boundary reductions.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think, I mean, for me personally, I don't like us to make a recommendation of removal. Based on just not having it, just not having anything. Um, I think that's a little too strongly worded, so.
What, what do you mean by not having anything?
We, we don't, we haven't studied this at all.
Oh.
We just said, we have this big picture of what we think this looks like.
Yeah.
And, I mean, for us to go forward and recommend that county commissioners look at removal.
Yeah, prioritize staff time to research and review the implications and possibility.
Yeah, I guess my point, uh, Commissioner Nelson would be. It was even the recommendation of the Lacy City Council and the Lacy Planning Commission that this be removed from the UGA. Because of the extreme difficulty in providing water and sewer to it, it would never happen in the next twenty years at minimum. Um, so it would make sense to give some, um. I don't know, to the, to the residents out there, some idea that, okay, we're going to take this out of the UGA. And to, and get about your life in the current zoning that's there and, and we're going to try to protect this area. I guess that's kind of the message that we're trying to send.
And I think the, the recommendation specifically is, isn't that, we aren't recommending that it be removed. We're recommending be considered for removal. And to recommend that we're prioritizing staff time to research and review the implications.
So prioritize a reduction of.
Yeah, so I think, I think we aren't recommending it without, I think what we are doing is recommending consideration and then. Having the kind of, the research, uh, to review the implications. So I think we're trying to do, I think, what you want out of it, Scott, would be my read.
Here's my, my concern. When this comes up. At some point. It's going to be, it can be. Put up as. The, you know, this is the. It, this is the way we want to go. And I, for me personally, I don't know. I mean, I haven't looked at McAllister stuff since. Two thousand and six or seven, maybe that area. So I'm not, I don't have enough familiarity with it on a. Really specific basis to ask for that because. I mean, what happens in planning is. It's, if somebody that just wants it removed comes up and says, well, the, it was recommended that we consider it for removal. That says, we don't need to study it. It's already been recommended that we consider it for removal.
No, what it says is the Planning Commission requests that the Board of County Commissioners prioritize staff time to search and review the implications. And possibility of these urban growth boundary reductions.
And then what I said above, it says consider for removal. And that's, that's.
Chair, we're just repeating points.
Yeah, well, you're right. I, I understand Commissioner Nelson's point, but I, I think that I understand Commissioner Halverson's point too, so. If, unless there's any further discussion, we're.
It could be just analyzed.
Yeah, I, I would.
Considered.
I understand what, uh, Commissioner Nelson just said and. And the fact is, it's difficult to sewer and develop high density and should be considered by the Lacy.
Instead of considered, you could just see analyze. So instead of considered for removal, analyze or?
So what if we just did this? What if we just take the last sentence? The Planning Commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners prioritize staff time to research and review the implication and possibility. Or actually just the.
Of the following urban growth boundary reductions.
Are you, are you making a motion to amend the motion?
I'm, I'm getting there. We're both looking at it.
It's really long.
I like the language as it is and I would probably argue against what's, what we're moving towards here, but. So I don't want to put, I mean, I, I'm ready to vote on this one.
Well, that one is going to fail, so.
Yeah, so without any further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Nay.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Aye, that motion passes. Aye, that motion passes. All right, well, are there any other further motions?
Do we want to re, Chair, do we want to revisit the first motion?
We can't in this meeting.
Here.
Okay. But.
It could still move on to the board.
What's that?
I mean, you did, you did make a decision, that decision can move on to the board. I think what you could do is shape what that recommendation letter looks like.
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't have to send a joint plan. We can send a recommendation to the board of not adopting this joint plan.
I understand, but I also understand what Commissioner Pestinger was saying. And Bishop Pestinger, maybe if you could, I mean, you made some good points, but I can't remember what they all were about why you'd, I'm sorry, I mean, there's been a long night. And I've, I've been up to four thirty this morning, so maybe restate what your, um, your concerns were with the Lacey joint plan?
Sure, I feel like there was a lot of, uh, topics of robust discussion today that were really important, and none of them have obviously been implemented into this plan. So I'm not ready to vote on it until that happens. Needs more work, in my opinion.
I, I'd like to hear a recap because I didn't catch anything.
Well, there's a lot of discussion. I'm not sure that we heard specific recommendations.
The, the way that I, that I read this now is that the planning commission has voted not to recommend the joint plan. And we can send that recommendation to the board with some findings of, with some findings. And so we could develop our findings, and if the findings are, are articulated similar to Commissioner Pestinger's concerns, I think that's perfectly legitimate. So I think at this stage, we should articulate our findings and then forward that with the recommendation not to, um, adopt the joint plan. Commissioner Pestinger, would you like to start out with a couple of findings?
Housing detail, for the detailed plans for housing.
The housing element is. Spars.
The work towards densification of the central core as opposed to, uh, urban suburban sprawl at the outer edges of the urban growth area.
Or to address the city, it's, it's just.
Yeah, I think that's outside of our.
That's, that's outside of a joint plan.
I think the only recommendation that you'd make that would do something like that in a joint plan would be to basically reduce density in the UGA to, in, like basically force an increase in the urban core.
Which is why I didn't want the zero to six.
So might that be something that we want to express to the board as a concern? Is that
Yeah.
these kind of middle residential densities in the UGA aren't something that we support?
So we'd support keeping UGA densities low to encourage development within the city.
Mm-hmm, within the city limits.
And I think you also raised a concern about developing at a lower density could potentially preclude higher density development if and when it doesn't get, if and when it does get annexed.
Yeah, I think that was Scott's.
Scott has a concern of losing big blocks of land to low density residential that could be used for high density during, after annexation.
That was his point on the MC construction zone.
Yeah.
I'll make a quick point here, which is it's hard to look at just the UGA in a, in a vacuum without considering what's available in the city limits. And the city limits are nearing buildout. We have essentially no, what we now have is low density zero to six. We have no available land for subdivision.
You should, you should annex the Martin Way.
So what we're, what we're seeing is we have a, a high proliferation of multifamily units. So we have eighteen hundred multifamily units in the development pipeline right now in Lacey. And that's by far the, you know, the most we've ever had in my career. So by doing these things that you think are injecting additional density into the city, it's not going to do anything because we're already seeing the additional density because it's the only property that we have left. So just consider that, that it's not, just by, you know, thinking that like, well, we can try to get additional density. It's already coming to the city in the form of multifamily development right now because we don't have any single family left. Because it's all been developed from about two thousand about twenty fifteen.
Commissioner Halverson, Commissioner Nelson, maybe you can address this. Are your concerns, would, would you like things better if you saw less low density in the UGA and more moderate density?
Just the opposite. Less moderate density and more low density in the UGA. Because then that forces the, uh, the construction inside the city limits. It also, when and if the cities want to expand and incorporate some of the UGA into the city limits, uh, that land is more, uh, amenable to higher density housing units. You go zero to six, you build six houses per acre. It's less likely that you're going to be able to purchase that parcel and put a high density, uh, on that property. It's also more likely that if it is zero to four in the county and the, and the city incorporates it and they can make it zero to six, then additional units can be built on that property anyway. So it increases the density once it's inside the city limits.
That's, and that's, that's not necessarily my concern. My concern is, I'm thinking more down the road. I would rather see these prop, I mean, I'd rather see them stay a lower development rate in the county so that when you guys come out and say, we're ready to bring this in, now we have a development. Because, I mean, not, not so much you guys, but you look at Olympia, and every time there's been something going for a rezone, it's been a crazy madhouse of the people that don't want it. Becau, and it's hard to do because if you've got, you know, a how, a development, you know, say ten acres with quarter acre lots and everybody's got their own house on it, that's a lot harder to take that and turn it into a, an apartment building or condos or so, whatever other multi. And that, I think, and where I'm coming from is I think that gets to some of the cost issue. Because if, if you, if I've got a piece of property here that doesn't have houses on it and Lacey comes in and says, we're going to annex that now, and you put an urban density on it, then it's much more likely that it's actually going to get there.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. I think it's just a, it's a, it's a, the arrangement of how our urban growth areas were established under the, the first plans that we did under the Growth Management Act said the UGAs are going to develop as if they are the city, right? So the same city standards are going to apply, including the zoning and the development standards, the roadways, the water, the sewer. They're going to develop, and then the city, when the city's ready to annex, they would annex already developed property. I think what you're talking about is almost like the urban holding area concept where you kind of put it in a kind of like, for lack of a better term, a stasis until the city's ready to come along and annex it and then inject additional development potential into the property by doing rezoning.
Or, or just infrastructure. I think the, the thing that keeps coming up here is that if the like development to a city standard requires city level infrastructure with water and sewer, and if that doesn't exist, then what is the appropriate level of development until that water and sewer?
That's right. And that gets back to the, the MGSA discussion is like, well, maybe since, so the idea with the, the MGSA removal is that, you know, we're no closer today than we were twenty years of, of searing that area. Is that, well, let's put it in an urban holding area. And so, you know, it basically is, is there if and when we need to expand again, that's an area we could expand to. Um, so you're, you know, you're right, the, and, and, you know, the, kind of the, the low density scenario on individual wells or septic systems at, you know, twelve thousand five hundred square feet is, um, is, it's, that's the, the definition of urban sprawl. And, and the idea is we shouldn't be doing that. We should be developing at a higher density, higher level of density on, you know, a full suite of city services so that we're not encouraging that type of development in urban growth area.
Well, and I think part of it is, I mean, I've lived here all my life. I think that people now think of urban as much different, you know. Yeah, I used, I mean, it used, I think it used to be, yeah, zero to four was considered urban. But we can't do that anymore because the only way we can do that is we just keep going.
Right.
And, I mean, I guess I'll be happy and sad because I'll have a lot of money, but I'll be leaving this area.
Yeah, and I think the other piece to, I think Scott's point that I find really compelling is that this idea that if it's zero to six now in the urban growth area, you're, you know, basically that's what we're expecting the whole urban growth area to develop at. And I don't think that is actually consistent with, I think, exactly to Scott's point, um, with what we would actually consider urban development. Like that is suburban sprawl that is like miles away from urban development. So I think some sort of recommendation, and I, I do like this urban reserve idea because if you have urban reserve that you have zoned really low density and then you don't even just have to choose to annex it, you could choose to change the zoning there. And then all of a sudden you put that zoning up to what you think is actually an urban density. Um, I think that makes a lot more sense and it can be a lot more deliberate and something.
It's a future land use map that doesn't necessarily align with the zoning that's currently there. I mean, that, that's how other jurisdictions treat their future land use map for them. So it's that longer term expectation of the city versus whatever is the zone now matches the zone it's going to be.
Well, not to let this spiral out of control, we're still trying to get some of these findings for staff to turn into BOCC.
Now, have you heard anything that sounds like a finding yet?
Some about actionable things, so it sounds like the consolidation, uh, is not a popular option. So that's pretty clear cut. We have a definition for what that is and what that looks like and what it doesn't look like. Uh, outside of that recommendation not to do the consolidation, are there other things that there is a consensus on that are actionable that would address these concerns?
Well.
Annexation would address a lot of these concerns. You'd annex all that, it would solve all those problems.
You've got some real specific corridors that would def, better define the city limits of Lacey if you would incorporate them. And I'm sure that the county would assist you in that. But you're not doing it.
Information, I don't know if I can interject, but I'm really curious. So how, I used to live in Tanglewild. And I know people are saying it costs me so much money to go onto the sewer. And I have the septic. And it's so much cheaper. I don't have to pay for sewer. I don't have to pay for stormwater. I don't have to pay for anything. My water bill's this much. These people are on a really tight budget. So how do you take a whole community and say, we're going to annex you and you're going to pay the bill? How do you make that, how do you get those people, how do you ask them to make that a reality for people who are working because of people?
We have those same situ, like my particular neighborhood is a late seared neighborhood, uh, a lot of them are still on septic systems.
So how, how can you do, what is, what's the incentive?
To get onto the sewer until their septic system fails. And the cost of redoing a septic system versus the cost of a sewer is probably, I don't know if it's the same, but.
It's expensive to do.
The failure is.
Again, and maybe the answer there is not to have a nineteen thousand dollar hookup fee and a, you know, a twenty thousand dollar construction project. Maybe the answer there is to incentivize it by getting rid of some of these hookup fees. But that's outside of this discussion. But in my neighborhood, if your septic system fails, you have to get on the sewer.
What is a, just, I, I honestly don't know this, but what is a realistic cost for, like, the actual cost of?
About forty grand. It was like nineteen thousand bucks to lot and about a twenty thousand dollar construction project, one of my neighbors did it this last summer. That's a lot of money. I mean, that could be ten percent of the value of a home.
It costs about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to redo your septic. My neighbor just spent fifty.
Yeah, yeah. So these are costs that, I mean, just because you got annexed, doesn't mean you have to abandon your septic system today.
Yeah, but it's coming.
At some point, yeah.
You only have to do it once.
Yeah.
Your septic system's going to fail again. Yeah.
It, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard discussion that it, low income problem. I actually lived in a neighborhood as a low income working person where I was forced to hook up to a sewer. And I had to, I had to take out a second mortgage.
And there are, there are some programs, depending on your income level, to get subsidies to install your sewer systems too. But those are, they're not easy to apply for, and sometimes people need help.
Well, I had a rolling one up until they ran out of money recently, but it wouldn't surprise me if they get funded again, and those are the kind of things that will be helpful.
So it sounds like everyone really wants to work on this annexation analysis, which I know is embedded in the joint plan to continue these discussions. But it is late and I want to, our guests are never going to come back if we don't let them go. And so if, if, if it's getting too late to craft findings, if there are commissioners that will commit to sending enough findings by the end of the week, otherwise we can just move forward with drafting up findings.
Well, the problem is if we do, if, if you want individual commissioners to send you findings, then it has to come back to the whole commission for.
Oh, for consideration, okay.
And we don't want to come back October fourth if we don't have to. I don't, I don't know how the commission feels if they, if they feel that staff has heard our concerns enough that they can articulate findings to the board on our behalf, but I don't think that they'll hear it. So I.
Hear anything specific.
So I think that we're, we're probably going to have to come back on that October eighteenth meeting and finish up this recommendation.
Does that mean I have to cancel my board work session on the seventeenth? Time, timeline does become an issue. So you do have a recommendation of the planning commission for the board to consider. The timeline right now allows for them to consider it this year. And since we, we spent a lot of time talking about how thi, this is so, so far behind.
In findings?
I mean, it.
We don't have to send them.
You know, if you don't want to, it was just an option.
I think the other thing we might want to consider is, you know, there is this problem where you optimize something that doesn't need to be optimized. And if we're thinking about a joint plan, it's going to be out of date as soon as the comp plan is done. Maybe trying to, you know, make extra time for this and send specific findings and you try and have a different, like cha, big changes to this joint plan. I think, I think we might be trying to work too hard on something that becomes, I mean, hopefully it doesn't take us seven years to get around to updating a joint plan.
Well, I guess we, we have our recommendation made and we have multiple recommendations made. And we'll ask staff to forward those to the county commissioner and then we'll pick this up in work session, or if people have concerns, they can bring them up during the board's process of adopting the joint plan. And then we'll have another shot at it during building and development code season and then in comp plans.
And an annexation analysis that may not end up getting done.
So.
Annexation analysis, it was in the joint plan.
Yes.
And then you've got a UGA analysis potentially that the board might prioritize resources for staff to work on.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything on the Lacey joint plan that they would like to add at this time? Can you show Commissioner Wheatley and Pestinger? I can't tell if they have the hands up.
So sorry, I should have stopped sharing a long time ago. My apologies.
Commissioner Wheatley or Commissioner Pestinger, do you have any more on the Lacey joint plan or are you satisfied with how this is moving forward? Well, I shouldn't say satisfied, is it good enough?
It's good enough, yes.
Okay, the staff understands our recommendation then.
Just.
Yep.
As is, okay.
Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time.